Okay, we're back in session or we're still in the discussion of, or I'm sorry, we're still in the staff presentation on AB 16-045, which is considered approval of a, excuse me, purchase and sale agreement for Block P South. We just went into executive session to discuss this sale and the litigation matters that were raised by one of the residents. And so, City Manager Stowe, you're going to take the floor and explain the letters from our attorneys to the property owner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the previous speaker had indicated that there was a recent letter that the city's legal counsel had sent to the legal counsel of the speaker, and I simply wanted to review that up on the screen and then maybe read out loud to the audience. So I know that it might be difficult to read or to see from the screen, but it reads, "The city of Bothell," this is from Craig Trueblood, the city's legal counsel from K&L Gates, "the city of Bothell has asked me to respond to your letter to Bill Joyce and Scott Masall dated February 12, 2016. As you may know, the city acquired property north of your clients' properties from Northshore School District in 2010. Since that time, the city has undertaken multiple cleanup actions to address historical contamination associated with the NSD's former operations. The city submitted detailed reports regarding those cleanup activities to Department of Ecology. If you'd like copies, please let me know. In response to the claim filed by Mr. Chuck Wolf on behalf of your clients in November of 2012, the city met with your clients' representatives and with NSD. The city and NSD developed a coordinated plan for additional cleanup work on the city's property and on your clients' property. Your clients' consultants provided comments on the coordinated plan, and the city completed its portion of that work in 2014. We understand NSD has completed its portion of the work as well. In November 2015, at NSD's request, the city met with the NSD to discuss the status of the cleanup work by the city on the city's property, and the NSD briefed the city on the work NSD has apparently completed on your clients' properties. Following the meeting, NSD requested additional information, which the city provided. Based on the prior work, the data currently available and the opinions of its consultants, the city has concluded there would not be cost-effective to attempt further cleanup work on the city's property at this time. The city has already shared this conclusion with NSD. The city is in the process of marketing its surplus property as-is and working with potential developers to achieve whatever regulatory standards and closure their new owner may deem necessary. Finally, your letter asserts that the city or its contractors caused the release of additional contamination, and that this additional contamination, or quote, "newly discovered contamination," is adversely affecting your clients' properties. NSD has made similar assertions. The city has investigated these assertions and has concluded they are not accurate. Rather, the city has concluded that pollutants apparently detected by NSD on your clients' properties as a result of historic activities by NSD on the property NSD sold to the city. The city has diligently complied, has diligently completed multiple cleanup actions on its property in order to address pollution from NSD's historical activities, and the city has concluded that additional work on the city's property would not be cost-effective at this time. The information contained in the Geoengineer January 27, 2016, report on behalf on NSD to Ecology, which the city just recently received and reviewed, does not change that conclusion. If you need more information from the city regarding this matter, please let me know or ask Mr. Hummel to contact Bob Stowe directly. And again, I would point out to council that we have spent nearly $1.8 million on this site already cleaning it up, and with close to $800,000 particularly just on P South alone. And I would urge council to support the authorization of the purchase and sale agreement. I believe that is the best vehicle that we can use to clean up this property as well as satisfy the concerns from the previous speaker. I'd be glad to address any questions that council might have.
Great, thank you, City Manager. Do we have questions from the council? Councilmember Freed.
Yeah, just curious from our legal counsel, why bargain sale agreement versus a quick claim deed?
I'm not sure of the answer to that at the moment. I'd have to look into that and discuss that with outside legal counsel on why that decision was made. I think we're following what we have done in the past.
Just historically, I mean, it doesn't necessarily matter, just curious because obviously we have choices of three different types of deeds, so I was curious.
It has been consistent with all of our other previous processes.
And normally, that's going to be demanded by a buyer in this type of transaction. They're not going to be happy with a quick claim deed.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I know, exactly.
Any other questions for staff? Councilmember Sandberg.
So should Main Street decide at the end of its contingency periods that it doesn't want to develop the property? Are there any circumstances under which it's, whatever the deposit, the $50,000 additional deposits, are there any circumstances under which those are not non-refundable?
No, all the extension fees, the 50, the 50, and the 75 are all non-refundable but applicable to the purchase price if they move to closing. So if they decide not to move to closing, those extension fees are retained by the city.
Okay. And then I asked, when were their groundwater test wells last monitored and what were the results? And you responded, "The last round of sampling was conducted on October 28, 2015 with varied results. There are still areas above MOTCA levels for diesel and oil-range hydrocarbons." So when you say varied results, I would imagine that there were pit tests that showed certain contaminants at a particular date. So on these October 28 results, is it the same contaminants that we've seen previously on that property, or are they different contaminants?
I believe they were saying, but I'd ask our Public Works Director to confirm that as the department that received the report from HWA Geosciences.
The varied results is that some of the, in some of the wells, the contamination has gone down. There are just a few wells where the contamination has not, has not gone down, and they have been fairly consistently, at least over the last year or so, have been diesel and oil-range hydrocarbons.
So it's the same contaminants we've seen all along, just at varying concentrations?
I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer to that question.
I thought that's what you just said, though.
Well, are you asking, there's been no new contamination that's been introduced to the site? If I may answer that directly, if that's where you're getting to? These are the same contaminations that we have experienced on this site previously. We have not introduced a new contamination to the site.
So when you say varied results, can you, can you just explain again what that means?
The varied results is that some of the monitoring wells, the contamination has gone down below MOTCA. There, I believe there is just one monitoring well that was sampled in October that is still above MOTCA.
Okay.
Two of the others have gone below.
And then you said that we've done, we've completed $1.8 million of cleanup on lots P North and P South to date.
That's correct.
And I'm concerned, but what our speaker brought up about the potential for litigation, is there a point at which we can say, we've already, we've done too mu, we've done enough, and we're not liable for anymore? Is there, is there a limit on that, or?
I believe that's the nature of our proposal, is we believe that we have spent an enormous amount of money cleaning the property up, and we still don't know where the source site is to finish that in the quickest, in the best vehicle to likely achieving that cleanup, which everyone wants, is to allow Main Street Properties to perform an investigation, to inform the cleanup, and then to develop the site.
Are we liable because we?
That's not a question that I can answer in public.
Because we bought the property as-is?
That's not a question I'm going to answer in a public setting.
Okay, but we did buy the property from the Northshore School District as-is?
That is correct, and Northshore School District was operating the site of which we attempted to remove the contamination from.
So in this letter that you read, which talks about these problems all being historical activities of the Northshore School District, I just want to be clear, we still bought the property from NSD as-is?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
So any other questions from the council? No? I have one that I hope you can answer. But this is probably for the Public Works Director. So the testing that they did was, so they did not speciate within the Northwest TPHDX or the diesel range test? That's what MOTCA's, do you know that answer? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said it ahead of time, I just thought of it now.
I believe City Manager Stowe has the actual report, so it may have that information.
So if you put these on the screen, again, this is another public document, but it's difficult to read. I believe what's shown here is the highlighted areas or the areas that exceed the MOTCA levels? And I don't know if that addresses your question, Mayor?
Yeah, so the TPHDX is the diesel range, and the oil range is usually a different test. And so I guess what Councilmember Sandberg was asking, so that the oil range hits, those were detected prior to our cleanup efforts? Do you know the answer? I'm sorry, these are questions I should have said. I didn't, I didn't think of these till now, so I apologize.
Well, again, I think we show there a baseline of 6115 out to the fourth round, which was done on 10/28/15, is what this report is showing.
Right. I mean, I was thinking prior to that cleanup that occurred in 2015.
I don't have that data with me this evening.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Does anybody else have any questions? We would entertain a motion now if somebody is so willing to do so. The Councilmember Agnew has moved the recommended action, which is to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement and the proposed development agreement for Block P South with MSPTXXXL or XXILC all in substantially the same form as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that? Councilmember Spivey. Discussion on the motion?
I'd like to make an amending motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we approve the purchase and sale agreement but amend the feasibility period to eliminate the second extension, which would effectively allow, let's see, the buyer shall have until June 14, 2016 to evaluate zoning and suitability of the property, and shall get one additional feasibility period extension, such extension expiring on December 12, 2016. So essentially, that's removing two of the feasibility period extensions.
So you'd have?
But proceeding forward with the purchase and sale agreement.
Because there's, there's three, so you say, you're requesting that there's one?
One extension.
Extension to what date?
That expires on December 12, 2016.
And for how much? Because you're, they have prices.
It's $50,000 as, as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember McNeil, discussion on the amending motion, which is to approve the purchase and sale agreement but to amend it, to eliminate all the extensions basically, except ones, correct me if I'm wrong, which would make the, the extension would expire 12/12/2016, and it would cost $50,000.
Correct.
Okay.
And if I may speak to my motion?
Please do.
I'm very committed to selling this last parcel of the Northshore School District property. I am concerned about the potential litigation, potential of being perceived as a bad partner in the community, preventing another property owner from developing their property, which is being contaminated through no fault of their own. I, I think that the, the property owner to the south of Lot P is very interested in selling and developing, which is what we want in the downtown area, but they're concerned that this contamination problem will continue, could continue, not necessarily indefinitely, but in their timeline, till the end of 2017 is a long time. And so I am, I am excited that we have, we are gaining a partner in the cleanup of this property, that we have, the city to this date has had, has had, well, run out of resources to clean up. And I think that having a shortened or removing those two feasibility periods will allow Main Street to, to speak to how motivated they are to clean up that property and develop it so that the, and so that adjoining properties can develop as well. And so I, I support the purchase and sale agreement, just not allowing it to extend out to December of 2017, because we need to facilitate and encourage, as the property owners, development as quickly as possible.
Does anybody else want to speak to the amending motion? Councilmember Spivey.
I won't be supporting the amending motion. I think, I know our city manager's done a wonderful job in negotiating this, and if he thought he could get a shorter time period, that he would have gotten a shorter time period. I worry that by accepting this amending motion, that this essentially could unwind this deal, and that it could be longer than 2017 before there's development and cleanup, or cleanup and development that occurs on this property. So I feel that we are putting ourselves at greater risk for having this property remain uncleaned by supporting this amending motion. Councilmember Sandberg is correct, we are gaining a partner in the, in this cleanup effort, and I believe the city manager's done a wonderful job in finding this partner in this cleanup effort, and he's gotten the best deal possible for us to move forward with the cleanup effort. And that's why I will not be supporting this amending motion.
Deputy Mayor, did you have something?
I won't be supporting this amending motion. I, I just think there's just not enough time, given the history of what we've gone through, what we've paid. I don't think asking them to know and have the answers by December 12 this year is enough time.
Anybody else would like to speak to the motion? So I'm not going to support this motion mainly because we've been after this for years, trying to find the source of this pollution, and to basically expect somebody to come into it. I mean, obviously, they're not coming in cold, but saying, well, basically, you have it till December 12 of this year, doesn't seem to me probably to be enough time for them to actually discover and, and figure out whether or not they can, they can do the cleanup. So if there's no other discussion on the motion, all those in favor, do you want me to read the motion again? Does everybody understand the motion?
Which they meant.
The amending motion? We're good? Okay. And we're going to raise our hands, too. So all those in favor of the amending motion, raise your hand and say aye. Opposed?
No.
Nay? So that fails five to two. Councilmember Sandberg, you still have four.
I'd like to make another amending motion.
Go ahead.
Which is similar to the first one, but eliminating the final extension. So effectively, the, the Main Street Properties would have until June 12, 2017 to close the, close the deal. So that's over a year from today to determine feasibility of site cleanup.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is made by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember McNeil, to eliminate the third extension, which is, how do we say this? And so the extensions would stand that they would, they would have an extension till December 12, 2016 for $50,000, and then another extension till, what, June 12, 2017 for $50,000, and not the third extension, for $75,000 to extend till December 11, 2017? Is that correct? Okay. This motion is seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil.
I will be supporting this motion. As all the other councilmembers have said, it's important that we, we finish our job downtown and get, and get these properties cleaned up. But I think what's important is we make sure that we do the job, and we don't continue extending it. Because what I've heard tonight is that if we go ahead and take this purchase and sell agreement with up to a 2017 extension, there's no guarantee that they're going to actually do the work. So I'm supporting the motion because I feel that we need to put some form of a timeline on when we're going to give them the extension to actually do their feasibility study. If they're supposedly going to be doing the work, they should know how long it's going to take to assess what that cleanup's going to be. It doesn't take a year and a half to determine that.
Councilmember Agnew, did you put your hand up? Nope? Okay. Councilmember Spivey.
Great, thank you, Mayor. For the reasons I stated on the vote that we had just taken on the first amending motion, I will not be supporting this motion for those very same reasons. It, we've been working at this as a city to clean this up for several years now, and to think that it could be done in essentially 18 months or not quite two years, I don't, I, I think it's, you know, the right thing is to give them till the original contract here, till the, was it the end of 17?
Yeah, December 11, 2017.
Yeah, I mean, to give them that time is, we've been at it for years, and look where we're at. We're looking for another partner to help us clean this up. I think it's only fair to give them that much time to do that. Again, we're, we're doing, we're bringing another, another player to the table to help with this cleanup, and that I'm concerned that if we change this agreement, that we won't have any agreement at all, and then it will be a lot longer before this gets cleaned up. So I will not be supporting this amending motion.
Any other discussion on the amending motion? Nope. All right, so let's go to a vote. So the amending motion, do we need to repeat it, or do we know, we understand what it is? Okay. All those in favor of the amending motion, say aye, and raise your hand. Aye? Opposed?
No.
So it passed, the amending motion passes four to three with councilmembers Agnew, Spivey, and Freed in the negative. You still have the floor, Councilmember Sandberg.
Well, I will be supporting the underlying motion. I think that we have at least provided a little more time certainty to get to cleanup and development on both P South and the speaker's property, because that's what we ultimately want. We want the property to be cleaned up, all properties cleaned up, so that they can go vertical. And so for that reason, I'm going to be supporting the motion, and I'm hopeful that with this, this partner of Main Street, that they will be able to find the source of contamination more quickly than we did, and, and be motivated to build, because this is the, the final piece that's, at least for the city's portion, for the, the completion of the Northshore School District development. So I will be supporting it.
Any other discussion on the underlying motion? Councilmember Freed.
Great, I'm excited to hear that. As I looked through the purchase and sale agreement, there's wonderful things that obviously happen here. We are going to have a developer that will be paying into the stormwater facility charge. We're going to have a developer, investor, paying into the transportation impact fee following up on latecomer charges to the city of Bothell, as well as there's language in here to make sure that they're submitting their applications in a timely process to make sure that they hit the start date. And if they don't, for some reason, start within the start date, they're actually penalized $2,000 a day. So it's all toward that downtown plan, which we just got recognized, that's been in an act for the last 10 years, which we just had a magazine come out this year, and Bothell was number one in the state of Washington for a place to live and is a vibrant, cool place to be. So I'm excited to see the downtown plan continue, and this last piece of property be able to transact. So thank you, council. Hopefully, we can pass this tonight.
Further discussion on the underlying motion? Councilmember McNeil.
I also will be supporting the motion, and I just wanted to thank staff and Bob for all their hard work, and I do look forward to going vertical in downtown.
Nope. Okay. Any other, oh, Councilmember Spivey.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting, supporting this, although it's obvious that I would like to have given them as much time to clean this up as possible, to make sure it gets done right. And I'm happy that my fellow councilmembers want to see the property to the south be developed, and that hopefully we'll go through with that, and it'll, it'll occur quickly. But I hope my fellow councilmembers also have the same enthusiasm for the property owners in the northeast part of our city who are wanting to develop their properties, that they show the same kind of support for them here in the near future.
Any further discussion? No? So just real quick, I just wanted to say thank you, City Manager, for bringing this forward. I supported the amendment to the motion in response to the property owner's concerns, and I'm sorry this is taking so long to address, but we do, we do have a partner now to help us clean this up. If we did not have a partner helping us clean this up, I could assure you, it would take a heck of a lot longer than two years. So I hope, I hope that you find some peace in, in our decision, so.
Mayor, can I make a comment after you're done with your vote, too?
You may.
Thank you.
After, after the vote, yeah. So the underlying motion is, there we go. We re-authorize the city manager to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement with, as amended, and the proposed development agreement for Block P South with MSPTXXXLC all in substantially the same form as presented. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Opposed? Passed unanimously. City Manager Stowe?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to indicate to the mayor and council that I will certainly present this to Main Street Properties, but this is not a unilateral change that can be made, and so they will have to execute that agreement and agree to that change that council has made, and I'll report back to council on their decision.
Thank you, City Manager. So the next item on our agenda is AB 16-046, which is considered approval of appointment to city council advisory boards and commissions. And do we have, oh, staff presentation by the city clerk, Laura Hathaway.
Good evening, council. We're just asking that council interviewed 21 applicants at the last city council meeting on May, March 8, and we are simply asking that the council make those appointments this evening. You have in front of you voting sheets. We have, as per protocol manual, we have three rounds. I would ask that you, we take them one at a time, each board and commission, one at a time. If you would pass those down to me, and then I'll tally them, and we'll display them on the document camera. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thanks, city clerk. So if there is no objection, I'd like to start with the planning commission nominations, because we have a lot of candidates in there, and it could have effects down the line to the other boards and commissions. Is everybody okay with that, starting with planning commission? So go ahead and fill it out there. I think we do have one partial position. Do you want us to mark which one we want to be partial? Okay.
Are we going to speak pro or con for anybody, or just mark?
I prefer no speaking conly of people, but if you would like to speak to your choices.
Well, that's right, I would never speak conly of somebody.
If you would like to, yeah, please feel free to, at this time, to speak to your vote choices.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank all of our applicants for all of these boards and commissions. We had a tremendous field, and it's so difficult to, to choose between all of these, these very qualified people, and so I appreciate wanting to serve your community. Some of the things that I look for in, in applicants for boards and commissions are, have they've ever had any previous experience in the city? And not just serving on a board or commission, but coming before us with a particular issue, neighborhood issue, otherwise. And then, well, I mean, that, that's sort of, you know, the, the main thing is, is interest in the community. And so I was really impressed with Patrick Cabe, who is an incumbent planning commissioner. I think he's done a great job. And I appreciated the, the interviews and the applications from Jason Hampton and David Wickwire, Gene Zorn's. So I really appreciate the work that Steve, Steve Booth has done on the planning commission. So we have a lot of really great candidates to choose from, and, and so it's going to be difficult.
Deputy Mayor?
So I've never done this before, but I'm just going to say who I'm voting for, and why.
That's okay.
I am going to be voting for Jason Hampton. I think he brings a knowledge of traffic and transit issues that would be very, very useful on planning commission. I was impressed with his interview, and so I'll be supporting him. Obviously, Patrick Cabe was mentioned before, he did a great job in his interview, he's an incumbent, so I'll be supporting him. And then finally, I'll be supporting Gene Zorn because of her. And then finally, I'll be supporting Jean Zorn because of her service on the UW Traffic Committee, her understanding of neighborhood issues, and I think we need a little gender diversity on the planning commission.
So if council members could just pass their ballot choices down to the City Clerk?
Where do we, where do we say partial? Do we just write it next to their name?
Yeah, just write it next to whichever you'd recommend to be partial.
Write the words full or partial next to the name. You just...
Well, I think, I think just putting partial next to, there's only one position that's partial. If you guys need your ballot back, it's a good time together. Did you need your ballot back? To mark partial? Okay, good, okay. I know, you're good. Appreciate that.
We're going to have to go to round two. I don't have any, I don't have four votes for anybody.
Not anybody. Can, let's, is there, so who?
I have, let's see, two, three...
We have to have a majority of council vote, people.
We have three votes for Stephen Booth. Two, three votes, oh, I'm sorry. We do, we have four votes for Patrick Cave.
Okay, Patrick Cave is...
So that's incumbent position seven. So I have three votes for Stephen Booth and two votes for David Wickwire for the partial and one vote for Troy Anderson for the partial.
I voted for Jason Hampton. Is he just one vote? That's not enough votes.
Are you talking about the partial vote?
It is almost time for break. Do you want us to take a break, City Clerk, and we'll come back in 10 minutes? Let's do that. We're going to go to recess for 10 minutes.
We, Patrick Kade received seven vote, four votes, so we assigned him to position number seven. Jason Hampton received seven votes as well, six for full term, one for partial, so we've assigned him to position number six. And Jean Zorn received four votes, two for partial term, two for full, so we have assigned her to position number one. Stephen Booth received three votes. Troy Anderson received one vote, and David Wickwire received two votes.
Okay.
So we're good with planning.
So we're good there. Okay. Thank you, everybody that applied and did the interview process for the Planning Commission. So now we are going to move on to the, what should we do? Should we do Parks Board next? That one seemed to have a lot, okay, let's do Parks Board next. Oh, just real quick, I don't know if any, if all the council members saw, but Sandra, and I think it's Sandy out though, she has withdrew, she sent an email out to the full council, so probably not vote her in, please.
And can someone remind me, I thought Bill Moritz also said that he was not interested in the Parks Board any longer?
He said he's not interested in, okay.
He was in, interested, okay.
These are all full, full terms. So for the sake of time, with the council members entertaining to do the Lodging Tax Tourism Advisory Committee now, we have four applicants in four positions. There's one partial term, so just mark that one in which you'd like to be partial. Do the, go ahead and vote on the Lodging Tax Tourism Advisory Committee. There's only four applicants and four positions open. One is partial, though, so mark the one you would like to be partial.
Just for clarity, wasn't Brittany filling a partial position for the prior chair? Is that correct? Okay.
If people are comfortable, we can do the Library Board now, too, or do you want to slow down? Go ahead, turn your mic on, Councilmember Sandberg.
I just wanted to check somebody's interest. I want to make sure that they weren't inadvertently left off.
Okay. We've got the clerk pretty busy over there. Do you want to just say who it was?
I'm looking myself on the, I'm just gonna pull up their applications, if we have a moment.
Yeah, take your time.
Mr. Mayor, I just checked, and there, there was no omission, so what we have is correct.
Okay.
So the Parks Board tally, Joanne Allen received seven votes and has been assigned to position number two. Roger Smith received five votes, has been assigned to position number three. And Stephanie Schrager has received four votes, five votes as well, and was assigned to position number four. For the total tally, Joanne Allen, seven, Roger Smith, five, Ethan Cockworth, two, Stephanie Schrager, five, Richard Molitor, one, and Nicholas Carlton, one.
Great, thank you. And we already sent your way the Lodging Tax Advisory Board?
Yep.
Okay. And I think we're ready to do the Library on this end. So just real quick, the Laura, our city clerk, Laura, heard from Laura Escudé Musso, I'm probably totally butchering that, but she was not notified of her interview. The email never got through to her, so that's why she didn't show up for interview. And so we got correspondence from that. I just want to make sure everybody saw that. This is Councilmember Sandberg.
And I remember her interview from the last time we did that, and she was a very impressive candidate, so I would hate for us to think that her absence was an indication that she wasn't interested in the position.
That's why I followed up with the clerk about that, so.
Great, thank you.
Rather than display the tally sheet for Lodging Tax Advisory Board, they are all identical, so I'm just gonna read this off. Katie Lovelace is incumbent, position number three, received seven votes. Chip Peterson, incumbent, position number five, received seven votes. Shawna Pitts, incumbent, position number seven, received seven votes. And Brittany Caldwell would be the partial term for position number four, received seven votes.
That was easier. So the last thing we have to vote on is the, well, the city clerk is tallying up the Library Board, but now we have the Landmark Preservation Board, and the former Landmark Preservation Board Chair, the deputy mayor, would like to say a few words about the Landmark Board.
Well, first of all, I'm fairly sad that not everybody was interested in the Landmark Board, because it's a rocking board. Obviously, Bill Moritz said that he prefers the Landmark Board after interviewing with us, and I would just like to put forth Mariana Price's name. In the interview, she was asked if she would be willing to serve, and she said she would, and I think as a candidate, she demonstrated a commitment to Bothell. That would be well served on the Landmark Board.
I don't know who was first over here. Councilmember McNeil?
So we have, so Stephanie is already on a board, correct?
Yes.
Jean Zorn's is already on a board, correct?
Correct, and so is Laura.
Laura, and then so, Mariana Price is another name on here?
Mariana Price, we asked her in the interview if she would be interested in serving on the Landmark Preservation Board, so that's why she's not on the list, but during the interview, we did ask her, and she was interested.
Okay.
Right? You were still in there? Okay, good. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Sandberg?
And then we have one other applicant in the audience, Mr. Troy Anderson, Anderson. And I was wondering if you would like to have your name considered for Landmark Preservation Board, or that was not one of your preferences?
I would certainly consider that, yes.
So you would be willing to consider Landmark Preservation Board? And are we missing anybody else in the audience who was an applicant who has not been selected for a previous board? Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Freed? Thank you so much for both of you, Tristan, Davina, bringing up the names of Mariana and Troy. Certainly, I appreciate you attending again tonight. It shows a lot of interest in the position and serving your city, so both of you have my support.
So while those are being passed down, I'll just say that we have seven votes for the Library Board position. Laura Escudé Musso has received seven votes for her incumbent position with Library.
Point of personal privilege?
Councilmember Freed?
Mr. Hampton, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Your fellow Planning Commissioner over here is a great representative, Mr. Belit, so the two of you will have a good time serving together. And I think you bring a good personality, good presence to the city, so thank you.
Hand you no transportation. We need you best, more than you need us.
received six votes. They each got a vote for part, the partial term. We have one full term and one partial term. So I'm gonna ask council to decide that one, who they would like to serve as partial term.
So let's do, should we just do a show hands, or you guys want to do ballots? It'd probably be easier just to do show hands. So Mariana Price and Bill Moritz have been appointed, now we need to decide which one is a partial term. So if you want Bill Moritz to be the partial term, raise your hand. That's five, so there you go.
Okay.
Is that it? That's the last board, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Congratulations.
For our group.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
For our volunteers.
Who has applied for a volunteer job, working on Board Commission.
I need a motion to ratify the voting, if you would, I'm sorry.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil, to ratify the voting for, what's that, city attorney? Voting for the Boards and Commissions. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. So we're on to AB 16-047, which is to continue the public hearing to discuss proposed Plan and Code Amendments, which together comprise the 2016 Docket initiation of formal consideration as warranted. And I'm going to reopen the public hearing, and we will hear from Gary Hassler.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As soon as I can get the PowerPoint up here, I'll start my presentation. All right, here we go. Thank you. As the mayor's already stated, this is the 2016 Docket of Plan and Code Amendments and a continued public hearing. With me tonight, in case I need his expertise on the downtown Plan and Code Amendments, is Senior Planner Dave Boyd. Just to recap, the Docket is the annual council review of suggested land use Plan and Code Amendments and related proposed actions. And council decides which items warrant formal initiation and the process path for each. Council decides whether to refer to the Planning Commission or other body for recommendation back to council, or to retain for direct council consideration, and in some cases, the priority of the item. Just to summarize, tonight's Docket contains six Plan and Code Amendments, which are mandated by either state or federal law, or in response to court decisions, four additional non-mandated Plan and Code Amendments, and two property-specific requests. Those are known as the Everest LLC and the Williamson requests, respectively. And I'm guessing that there are applicants here tonight for both of those. Council will have noticed that the 2016 Docket contains a number of competing items, and you've already had some discussion on items that are already in front of you, so I think staff already has some sense of your priorities. But in addition to the Plan and Code Amendments, which the city is mandated to accomplish, there are other potential items which are council or staff priorities, and some of those include Plan and Code Amendments for the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, land use development tools such as lot clustering, lot size averaging, including revisiting the city's tree preservation regulations, as well as miscellaneous downtown code amendments, and these often have a direct bearing on potential development projects in the downtown area, updating the housing strategy plan and potential code amendments for affordable housing. And in addition, there are still a number of items outstanding from previous dockets to be heard. Given all of the above, staff believes that it will be essential tonight for the council to prioritize any docket items initiated, and staff is willing to help council engage in that process. Before I go any further, I'll take care of some housekeeping business. Staff received three exhibits for this item tonight. The first is a letter that goes to item number eight on your list, which is the land use development tools. And the other two are an email and a letter, which both go to item nine on your list, on the matrix list, which are both downtown Plan and Code Amendments. And essentially, the, I'll summarize, the first letter for the land use development tools is encouraging council to include rounding up of lot calculation density in that code amendment, which, which staff has included in the matrix. The, the second two are in support of specific downtown code amendments. So moving through each of the items on your matrix, these are, my presentation are numbered the same as they are in your matrix. In order to try and save some time for council, you have a fairly, I think, fairly complete description of each item in your matrix. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have, but in terms of the presentation, I've simply noted the item and then the staff recommendation. In the past, council has made motions for each item, so mayor, you may wish to discuss logistics and how you would like to proceed through these. We can do them individually and do a motion for each, or, given that you have to do some prioritization, it might make sense to go through the matrix first, and then have council discussion of the items and what your priorities might be before taking motions. But your choice.
Could I ask you a clarifying question about that?
Certainly.
So I was under the assumption that the matrix was prioritized. Is that not the case? The, I mean, there's obviously the mandated things.
Yes, we tried to do some prioritization for you. First of all, the mandated items are there, and then the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, which I sort of put under a heading, has potential economic benefits to the city. That item also comes, as council knows, with a fairly, a fairly hefty budget request for the next two years for consultant fees. And then there are items that staff believes are, need to be addressed for code deficiencies, and finally, the, the two property-specific requests. So there is some prioritization in that list, yes.
And so with that prioritization, are you signaling to us that the staff are capable of handling, because we have a backlog of things that we're still working on from last year, and this is on top of that, and I just want to get an idea from you, what we're looking at from, from a staff capacity standpoint, Planning Commission standpoint, capacity standpoint?
You'll notice in the, in the staff recommendations for each of these items that we, we recommend, or suggest that we can complete these either in 2016, or in some cases, 2017. And in the case of the two property-specific amendments, because of the heavy workload and priorities in other places, and the fact that we just adopted the 2000 periodic Plan and Code update, staff is recommending that one of the property-specific items, the Williamson, be deferred to 2017 Docket, and the other, the Everest LLC request, not be considered further. But in the case of each of the items on the matrix, staff has given some indication of timeline.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was the case.
And typically, what happens is, council usually has one or two or three priorities, that, the things they really want to get done upfront in each docket, that's, that's typical each year. The way we've suggested things in the past has been, tell us what those, tell us what those items are that you really want to get done first, and then initiate what else you think you need to initiate, and we'll work out the, the workload and work program for those down the road. But I think what would really help staff tonight, and I think we've already heard some from earlier council discussions, is those items that you really want us to work on and focus on first. So if you would like, I can run through the slide for each item with a staff recommendation, and take them one at a time, or, or just run through them and have council discussion.
Could we do the public comment period first?
Absolutely.
Then we'll, I would like that, though, to go through this, the slides.
Certainly, and I'm sure there are people signed up to, to talk to their items, so.
There are, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hassler. First person is David Habowitz. He probably didn't mean to sign up on this. He's not here. Next person is Sherman Williams, I think it's Williamson.
Thank you. It is Sherman Williamson and my wife, Mary. We do live at 243197th Avenue in Bothell, and we've been there for 40 years now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our request. The, this rezone request comes first with a quick history that predates some of you on the council. In 2013, when Safeway wanted to build on their new site, they needed an access light on 527, which was too close to the intersection at 240th. Also, at that time, a council member who is not here wanted a bypass road from 527 to either 88th or 7th to reduce the West Hill cut-through traffic through the Conifer View area where she lived. The solution to both of these problems was provided by David Malott, whose property adjoins both the Safeway project as well as ours. Hoping to link his property to the Safeway development, he independently paid for a design engineering for a road, or a bypass road, which would be a full road that goes through his property, connecting to Safeway, and then beyond his property to 7th and 88th through privately-owned properties of ours and our neighbors. Through all this, Safeway did get their light and their building permit. Mr. Malott did get access and ACB zoning for his property. The downside was that the two adjacent properties, ours and our neighbors, had the requirement now of a major bypass road, full road, for the properties if they were ever developed. At that time, we were told by city council members that they were not taking away any property from us. They were only requiring future developers to build a road, not for us to do it. However, it's very clear that that road requirement increases the development costs and greatly reduces the amount developers will pay us for our land. At this time, all I am requesting is the, is that you consider our rezone request, making our property match the adjoining property to the south, between which the road will have to go. This will make it more reasonable for the developer to do both properties together and to meet the additional road requirements for the city. Hopefully, this will partially compensate for the loss and the, and the, or in the added To go through the slides.
Certainly. And I'm sure there are people signed up to talk to their items, so.
There are, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hassler. First person is David Habowitz. He probably didn't mean to sign up on this. He's not here. Next person is Sherman Williams. I think it's Williamson.
Thank you. It is Sherman Williamson and my wife, Mary. We do live at 243197th Avenue in Bothell, and we've been there for 40 years now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our request. This rezone request comes first with a quick history that predates some of you on the council. In 2013, when Safeway wanted to build on their new site, they needed an access light on 527, which was too close to the intersection at 240th. Also, at that time, a council member who is not here wanted a bypass road from 527 to either 88th or 7th, to reduce the West Hill cut-through traffic through the Conifer View area where she lived. The solution to both of these problems was provided by David Malott, whose property adjoins both the Safeway project as well as ours. Hoping to link his property to the Safeway development, he independently paid for a design engineering for a road, or a bypass road, which would be a full road that goes through his property, connecting to Safeway, and then beyond his property to 7th and 88th, through privately-owned properties of ours and our neighbors. Through all this, Safeway did get their light and their building permit. Mr. Malott did get access and a CB zoning for his property. The downside was that the two adjacent properties, ours and our neighbors', had the requirement now of a major bypass road, full road, for the properties if they were ever developed. At that time, we were told by city council members that they were not taking away any property from us. They were only requiring future developers to build a road, not for us to do it. However, it's very clear that that road requirement increases the development costs and greatly reduces the amount developers will pay us for our land. At this time, all I am requesting is that you consider our rezone request, making our property match the adjoining property to the south, between which the road will have to go. This will make it more reasonable for the developer to do both properties together, and to meet the additional road requirements for the city. Hopefully, this will partially compensate for the loss and the, or in the added expense of the major development. Mr. Hassler did inform me that he intended to recommend the rezone move forward, but also suggested that he, or would be postponed a year. And I'm asking that it not be postponed a year, in that, or out of consideration for what has been asked for us on our pieces of property at this point in time. My wife and I would like to move on, and this is a major thing, if we have to wait multiple years, to move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Mark Nyheart.
Thank you, mayor and council, for hearing my comments. And thanks again for addressing the noise ordinance in maybe another venue. I do think and believe that noise is an important public health issue. Other cities address it in their strategic comprehensive planning. I believe Bothell should address it in their comprehensive planning. I understand that it might be too soon, in 2016, to have that fully addressed. But I would ask that you put in the framework, in other words, having noise as a major component in a comprehensive plan, and maybe some of the subcategories to address that. Put that in this year with the goal that there'll be time then to consider that in the 2017 docket. So you won't be addressing it this year. All you would be doing is recognizing that noise is a major public health benefit, public health issue. It affects development. It's going to affect a lot of other issues. So put the framework in this year, simply, and then address it next year, when there may be more time to address it more fully. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? Please come up and just give your name for the record, and go ahead.
Good evening. My name's John Langston. I'm with Everest LLC. I'd like to start by submitting into the record two emails. The first email, first email I wrote to Bruce Blackburn, who then forwarded that to Gary Hassler, with a carbon copy to me. My request to the update of that email was not answered up today. That email was written five weeks ago. I'm the owner of three parcels, formerly five parcels, in Canyon Park, on 228th Street Southeast. The current proposed use is office professional. It creates a traffic impact in the top 10% of all 37 categories listed on Form W for the City of Bothell. The staff statement on page 171 in the docket that you have before you quotes, "The designation to the subject property would likely significantly increase the number of vehicle trips on 228th Street Southeast, close to the intersection of SR 527, which is already significantly challenged." That statement is simply inaccurate. Of the 37 categories listed on Form W, only two, or less than 5%, show an impact at a higher rate, one of which is childcare, which is already there, which we've already paid for and improved the road for. I'd also like to point out that the staff reported that the plan designation does not directly touch subject, the subject property, which is to say, we're asking for a zone variance into, into a portion to the east of our property. We currently are OP to the east of our property is RAC, OPCB. If you'll refer to page 196 of the docket that you guys have in front of you, you'll see that the property clearly shares its entire eastern portion, and a portion of the southern border with the proposed amendment zonings that we're requesting. In closing, it's our intent to work with the city to provide good local jobs, like we have. We've been in the city for, we've been here since 1989, 1990.
Could you wrap up your comments, sir?
Yeah, we're providing local, local jobs and positive impact to the region, recognizing that a medical office building will impact the traffic corridor as adversely as any other use, according to your own City of Bothell forms, coupled with the inaccuracies of the staff report on the two primary concerns. I'd encourage the council to consider our review. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public comment period? Mr. Hassler, you're back on.
Thank you, mayor. So the first docket item, number one on your matrix, is a mandated item. This is code amendments to, one, comply with MPDES2 requirements, two, amendments to the critical areas ordinance and shoreline master program, to more closely align both of those with FEMA guidelines, and three, to clarify regulations, primarily definitions, concerning fish and wildlife habitat within the critical areas ordinance. I've grouped these three together because they're all extremely similar. Most of the work for all three of these has to do mostly with definitions. The NPDES amendments are, staff has already engaged with a consultant to work on those. We're hoping to take those to Planning Commission in March or April, and bring them to council later this year. So the staff recommends that council initiate code amendments to comply with NPDES2 requirements.
Mr. Hassler?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but could you just tell people what NPDES? I know what it is, but could you, for the listening audience, because you did say critical area ordinance and shoreline master program?
Sure, if I can remember the entire acronyms, National Pollution Discharge, you can help me with ES.
Elimination System, but it's a municipal stormwater permit that we have.
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
And apologies for all the acronyms up there. I was trying to keep the slide as short as I could. So to summarize, staff would recommend that, because these code amendments are mandated, that council initiate them, and refer them to the Planning Commission for hearing deliberation and recommendation back to council in 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about this item.
I'm sorry, what?
I have a question about this item for staff.
Do, can we hold questions until he's done with his presentation? Or do you want?
Oh, I thought we were going to go through each one, one by one, and decide. Are we going to go through the whole thing, and then go back and decide?
I thought we were just going to have a presentation by Mr. Hassler, and then we were going to go through one by one. But I guess, go ahead and ask questions. I'm fine. Is everybody okay with that, to ask questions as we go along? Councilmember Freed?
Yeah, I agree. It would be nice, because there's a lot of details. It would be nice to kind of discuss, then set that one aside.
Okay.
If you would mind. I have a question right after Tris.
Let's do it.
So we have an unfinished item from the 2014 docket relating to the shorelines hearings board. Is that, it seems like that's a pretty discreet item. Is that something that would fit and be wrapped into this, so that we can check off 2014 altogether?
Are you referring to the item that was initiated to consider replacing the duties of the shoreline master, shoreline board with the Planning Commission?
Yes, that was a 2014 docket item, and we talked about it a little bit up here, and...
I think we could wrap that into this. It's been previously initiated. Council's other choice for that item, since it's not time-sensitive, would be to hold it off on the docket. But we, I think we could wrap it into these. The other option council would have with that one would be to not consider it further, and simply keep the shoreline board, or revisit the issue in the future.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Freed?
Just curious, how much time do you think? You said you were going to bring it back in April, or what are you doing in April?
The plan is to have the consultant take the code amendments to Planning Commission in March or April.
Okay.
And then bring it back to council following that. And I think, this is primarily a Public Works issue, the NPDES2 requirements, but planning is working with them. I think the Public Works Director can correct me if I'm wrong, but the expectation is to have that finished up before the August break.
So this would have to pass this year in 2016, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I'd certainly be in favor of initiating to the Planning Commission for an A valuation. But maybe you're going to come back right after questions and ask us that, is that correct?
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, but I totally thought that we were just having a presentation, so I skipped over the closing of the public hearing. So let's do that real quick. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. All those in favor, raise your hand. Oh, deliberation?
Clarification, we're closing it, or we're going to extend it?
My directions are to close it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're done taking public testimony on this.
Yeah. So the motion is to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed? Passes five to two. So we'll go back to discussion on item number one. Councilmember Freed said he'd like to initiate and have it go to the Planning Commission, right, and come back in 2016? Or the staff recommendation. Is anybody opposed to the staff, Councilmember Sandberg?
I agree.
Agree, agree, agree. Okay. Next one.
Item number two concerns code amendments regarding impact fee deferrals. And this is in response to new state laws regarding such fees. Council may be aware that the state legislature passed ESB 5923 regarding impact fees, which essentially requires the city to set up an impact fee deferral program. And there is a mandated state deadline for that, for adoption of that by September 1st, 2016. Staff is currently working on this item now. And because of that mandated deadline, staff recommends that council formally initiate the item for adoption by September 1st. And there is a attachment in your packet regarding this item specifically.
Is there any discussion on this item from the council? Councilmember Sandberg?
So again, just trying to get an idea of your workload, Planning Commission's workload. How many, I'm trying to think, like, how many months' time are we talking here? Because we just, you know, the LID ordinance is a big one.
Yep.
And this one is another required, one that's going to take time.
This one is actually not that complex.
Okay.
I think we can probably do this in one or two Planning Commission meetings.
Okay.
And as I said, staff is working on it now. I think we have a, I think we can meet this, we can meet this deadline, and we need to.
So I thought the staff recommendation for this item was, oh.
I'm sorry, to retain for direct council consideration because of the short timeline.
Okay, so you do want it to come to us directly?
Yes, correct.
So is everybody supportive of having it initiated, come to city council, and be addressed in 2016?
Yes.
Okay, next item.
Item number three is potential Plan and Code Amendments to address the outcomes of a collaborative process regarding Fitzgerald Low-Impact Development Overlay Regulations. And council has already had some discussion of this this evening, and I think staff has a fairly clear idea that this is a high council priority. So staff recommendation is that council initiate proposed Plan and Code Amendments to the Fitzgerald Low-Impact Development Overlay, and retain for direct council consideration in 2016. So at the present time, council is aware that Parametrics is doing a best available science study, and following that will be a collaborative, a public involvement process, a collaborative process. We're not sure at this present time what Plan and Code Amendments may come out of that. But there may be some. So we're recommending that you initiate potential Plan and Code Amendments for whatever may come out of that process.
I have a question.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So you had mentioned earlier that you, staff was going to go out for another RFP for public participation, so this would be in addition to the Parametrics report. Do we have a cost and time estimate on that, other than, I mean, I know that you have that page worth, but again, the Fitzgerald property owners were under the impression that this was going to be a somewhat narrow public engagement process, and what I'm hearing sounds broader than that.
Regarding that issue, I would defer to the Community Development Director, who's been working on that RFP.
Well, it is something that council made a decision on to move forward with. I don't think it's, it's going to be a major effort. I think it's, but I think it is important to have an independent facilitator meet with the property owners, and discuss various issues with, with their preferences regarding land use and zoning.
Okay.
You know, we certainly are hearing the council that you want to move forward quickly, and as diligently as possible, and we'll treat it as such.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Councilmember Freed?
I personally would support initiate to the city council this year.
Anybody else? All right, we got that down. So just so you guys know, at the end, we're going to make a motion for all of these. Okay. I do as well support doing this one now, as I stated earlier this evening, or as soon as possible. Item number four.
Item number four is Plan and Code Amendments to respond to comments from the Puget Sound Regional Council regarding follow-up work post the 2015 periodic Plan and Code Update. These are primarily transportation and housing-related. The PSRC has certified our GMA-compliant comprehensive plan. We're not out of compliance, but they had a number of follow-up items that they wished us to address following certification. Staff believes that, given that we are in compliance with GMA, that there is some time to work on those. So the recommendation from staff is to initiate the Plan and Code Amendments to address comments received from PSRC, and assign the amendments to the Planning Commission for hearing deliberation and recommendation back to council in 2017. And our recommendation, I think we can bring those back in early 2017. I don't believe they're as time-sensitive as some of the other issues in front of you that are mandated.
Any discussion on this item? Councilmembers, Sandberg?
And how is the concern related to housing different than item number six?
Item, there are actually some overlap. I think some of the items, some of the housing issues that we'd be talking about in number six have some overlap with some of the comments from PSRC. Actually, I'll make the comment that city staff and arch don't entirely agree with all of the comments regarding the housing issues in the letter from PSRC. So we're discussing those items with them. I don't think we'll end up tackling all of the comments in that letter, at least that's my hope. But there is some overlap, which is why I mentioned the PSRC item again in number six.
So what do you think about in terms of staff time on this? And do you think that it's, you said to bring it back to council. Is that correct?
The recommendation is to assign to the Planning Commission, and bring a recommendation back to council in 2017.
Oh, that's right, yeah, bring to Planning Commission.
This item will involve not just community development and planning, but also Public Works for the transportation items. And I think Public Works, the Public Works Director can weigh in, but I think Public Works probably needs some, needs the additional time to tackle those items as well.
Okay. Well, I would support initiating it for Planning Commission.
In 2017?
Yes. Well, it says, it says recommendation back to council in 2017.
Okay, so PC in 2016?
Well, my intention on that was that the item would be started in early 2017. So if that's not clear in the, in the motion, I'll clarify that.
So you want us to initiate this to the Planning Commission in 2017?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Councilmember Freed?
I agree.
Okay. I just wanted to say, too, that the Puget Sound Regional Council offered up some staff support for these amendments, and I would encourage you guys to take them up on it.
We will do that, and that usually comes in the form of advice rather than actual work.
Oh, okay. Somebody in the backseat telling you how fast to go.
Exactly.
Nice, okay. I thought it was a little more substantive than that, but. Item number five.
Item number five is a review of BMC Chapter 12. Item number five is a review of BMC Chapter 12.22, which is the sign regulations. This is in response to Supreme Court ruling known as Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, which came out in June 2015. This Supreme Court decision affects probably every jurisdiction sign code in the nation. It was initially predicated upon temporary signs and the content of temporary signs, but the court's decision actually was a little broader than that. Staff recommends that council initiate consideration of code amendments to BMC Chapter 12.22 and assign the amendments back to the Planning Commission for Hearing Deliberation and Recommendation back to council in either 2016 or 17. I made a comment there that of the mandated items, I think this one could probably be deferred to 2017. We've been operating with our current sign codes since then, and I think we could continue to do so, and I would welcome any comments that the city attorney might have in regards to that, should he want to weigh in.
So would I. Do we, are we exposed, is this an issue we need to take up sooner or later?
Sign code, well, we can't enforce certain sections of our sign code right now, so as long, it is something that needs to be taken up fairly soon. Basically, we have certain portions of our sign codes on the books that if we were to enforce them, we'd be open to lawsuit. And so, we've taken a measured approach, a, we've taken the approach of just making sure we did not enforce any of the challengeable sections for the time being until we could get a fix.
Councilmember Spivey?
Could you just give us a real brief synopsis of what the decision was?
No, I'm not prepared to do that on the spur of the moment. I would need my notes, and I just did not come prepared to do that. So, I would butcher it all to pieces if I tried to do that on the spur of the moment. So, if that's...
It would be helpful either from, you know, somebody from staff to give us kind of the Cliff Notes as to what the decision was and how it affects us.
Yeah, and I thought I saw that in some of the materials that was circulated, but I may be remembering imperfectly, but for some reason, I thought it had been circulated, the Cliff Notes version, but if it's not, we can do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So, I think I did see some Cliff Notes either from AWC or MSRC. And Gary, if you correct me if I'm wrong, because that was one of the first things I learned on was sign code, learned planning and zoning was on sign code, and we thought we had it right. And when I read that article, it doesn't even, it suggests that we can't even regulate the difference of on-premise versus off-premise signage, and I always thought that was sort of the core of our current sign code, and then this decision seems to negate that.
Well, I think we had it right, given court decisions at that time. And the Supreme Court has come out this time with a, I think Joe would agree, probably quite a different view on content within signs. So, I think we did have it right, and I still think the essential structure of our sign code is good. But as the city attorney has said, there are some specific signs, in particular temporary signs, such as real estate signs and political signs, where we may be open to challenge. But as council, many council members may be aware, anytime you open up the sign code, it's not necessarily a simple issue.
It's unpleasant.
It's unpleasant. It hits a lot of people in a very personal place, if their business or believe in free speech, which everyone does. I'm not sure I can give you a better recommendation than that on this one. My fear is that, is that if we try to tackle this immediately because we feel we might be open to litigation on some of those signs, we're going to put a lot of staff resources into it, and other things are going to get held back, or we can continue on the path that we've been going down and regulate them the way we have, as Joe said, not enforcing them the way we have been, and address them when we can get to them.
Could you give the floor to the city attorney real quick?
Sure.
And just to be clear, you know, as long as we don't try to, I just want council to understand, as long as we don't try to enforce our code as written in certain aspects right now, I don't, you know, we're not going to be in trouble in the near future. So, if, you know, Gary feels like we need to, he has a recommendation to prioritize, I'm not opposing his, the priority that the community development has set in this case. It's just something that we do need to get to, in the priority, we do need to make sure we get to it. One thing that will help us is there are a number of very good minds that are working on model sign codes right now to try to address this in the state of Washington, because we have some unique state laws that have to be dovetailed with the, what is now a federal case law. And so, we do have people in the state that are working on model sign codes, and I know of one that just got completed, I don't have my hands on it yet, but, so we may be able to piggyback on some good work that's being done that may make it easier for us.
Go ahead.
Well, I would recommend that we do initiate it, but put it at the bottom of the list of certainly any of our mandated or required elements, which would likely put it into 2017, because just from previous experience, it seems like it would be an easy thing to do, even to pick up somebody else's sign ordinance and go with it, but it's like a can of worms, and it could really involve a lot of time. So, obviously, I think we need to initiate it because it's important, but put it at the bottom of the priority list for Planning Commission.
So, would it be safe to say initiate Planning Commission 2017?
I think that's safe, considering what we have already on the docket.
People seem agreeable? Okay. Item number six.
Item number six is a review and update of the Housing Strategy Plan, as well as potential plan and code amendments for affordable housing, and also including potential plan and code amendments in response to the PSRC recommendations that I've already mentioned. So, this is another three-parter. Staff recommends that council initiate this item and assign it to the Planning Commission for Recommendation back to council in 2017. The mandated part of this is the PSRC part, which we've already discussed. I think we have a little bit of time on that. The Housing Strategy Plan at present time, I know it's not entirely consistent with the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year. There are some, some things that need to be changed in that to correctly reference new policies in the, in the housing and human services element. But I don't think the Housing Strategy Plan itself is critical to be 100% consistent right now. And then, the affordable housing item is something that staff would certainly like to pursue, and we are addressing that or pursuing that on both the Nike Hill and South Riverside Drive planning code amendments. But it may be one of those, one of those items that we, council has to make a policy decision on as to where, where that falls in amongst all of the other important items. So, our recommendation would be Planning Commission 2017.
And your recommendation is to the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
So, I'm trying to understand what you were talking about in terms of the Nike Hill and Riverside affordable housing element.
So, what we're pursuing on those two planning code amendments is a potential link between Planning Commission recommendation for upzoning the property and as a nexus from that upzone, requiring a portion of new units that might be created to be affordable to some degree. And that's a very quick nutshell description of it. But anytime you upzone property, courts have shown that there is a clear nexus for requiring some affordable housing component. And in fact, there's a policy in the comprehensive plan now that requires us to explore those opportunities.
Okay, thank you. I was actually going to say, I'm not really, it's my understanding that we're over the growth management requirements, and I'm not interested in seeing any upzones unless there's an affordable housing element.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So, during the major plan update last year, we had a lot of conversation, options that were provided to us by Arch for including affordable housing. And I think it might be a good time to revisit some of those, to bring those back, and in the context of the Housing Strategy Plan. And as I've, as we've gone through the elements, we've delegated a lot of work to the Planning Commission. And I would make the argument that we would want, we might want to keep this item with council. There's a lot of policy decisions wrapped into this. Affordable housing is one of the top issues in our region right now. And spending time with our Housing Strategy Plan and understanding that at council level, I think will make us better policymakers and decision-makers. So, I think that we've, we've given Planning Commission a lot, and I think this would be a good one for us to retain here, and because we've already had some conversations about it in the context of the major plan update last time as well.
Any other council member want to, so you would like to initiate to City Council in 2016? Is that what you're...
I would initiate to City Council following our completion of our 2014 or 2015 docket items, specifically Fitzgerald area. And we can look at prioritizing it in the context of the rest of our work program for 2016. But yes, I would say initiating it towards the end, maybe the fourth quarter of 2016, and if necessary, pushing that out into 2017.
Because I think I heard the deputy mayor say, because we have two other planning code amendments on our agenda of Nike Hill and East Riverside Drive that are both zoning increase. She would like to talk about affordable housing before those, is that what you were trying to get at? Okay.
And I think that's a really valid point. I think that we should have an understanding of the global issue before we start to apply it in subregions or subareas.
Maybe this is something we can do while we're waiting for Fitzgerald.
Well, it's dependent on staff resources.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's certainly a timing issue because both of the Nike Hill and South Riverside need to come back to council at some point down the line, along with Fitzgerald, for that one-year plan amendment that we do. So, I think it might be a challenge to get the global affordable housing discussion in before those come back, or to try to work all those out, but we can look at it.
So, what I hear is initiate City Council 2016 from Councilmember Sandberg, and I think Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Freed, your lights on, do you want to comment?
Yeah, basically, initiate City Council. I was going to say C fit in as on the future docket, meaning as they can at 2016, 2017, as Councilmember Sandberg said.
Everybody comfortable with that?
With that halo zone.
I just want to say, I support what Deputy Mayor, Duer, and as well as Sandberg, that we should, we should really look at this and think really wisely about increases to zoning without making affordable housing accommodations, so, like this year. Item number seven.
Item number seven is an item that council is familiar with from your retreat. I've put this under the heading of plan and/or code amendments having a potential economic benefit to the city. And so, this is plan and code amendments for revisioning the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, including potential plan and code amendments regarding the transfer of development rights. This is the, this is the tough one for staff to know how to prioritize this because of two items. The first is because of the budget implications, but the second is because I think this one will require greater staff resources to pursue fully. We do have a recommendation to initiate plan and code amendments for revisioning the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, including potential plan and code amendments regarding the transfer of development rights, and refer the item to the Planning Commission for Hearing Deliberation and Recommendation back to council in 2016 or, and 17. Staff feels that there are some tasks that we can accomplish the second half of this year that won't require budget funds, such as reaching out to stakeholders within the Business Park and the Regional Growth Center and starting the work with them. But as I've noted at the bottom of the slide, more significant work will require funding from council in the bilingual budget for 1718.
Councilmember Freed?
I would love to see this come back in September, October, but prior to that time, we're going out, actually, enroll consultants to prepare, to lead our discussion. That would hopefully culminate with the final decision sometime in April or May of 2017. Have a really concentrated city project for six months that we're focusing intently on the Canyon Park subarea. But it's not something, obviously, we're going to do in April, May, June, July this year, but something that we'd focus on starting in September, October, and really focusing on a really good, well-thought plan that takes us to April, May, maybe even June of next year. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think the budget item is the, the funding that we need is the big item on there. To really do a thorough job, we need to bring consultants in.
Yeah, I completely agree.
And so, I think that is, that's the, that's the item for council, the issue for council, I think.
So, we invested a good amount of funds in downtown Bothell, and I think that investment, I actually know that investment has significantly paid off. We can see it in the news constantly. Every time we open the magazine or get on the internet, we can see that investment is now creating a great draw to the city of Bothell. I want that draw to be in the Canyon Park subarea for the Snohomish County residents, since none of us up here live in Snohomish County. We need not forget our neighbors. So, I would love to have that initiated and really invest through consultants that can help be in that process with you, with us. So, that would be initiate City Council, and I say A, but it's really the back half of 2016 to start in earnest.
Deputy Mayor?
I would agree with Councilmember Freed. Also, if I'm remembering correctly from the PRSC recommendations, this was a piece of what they were asking for?
It's a part of it, yes. It does fulfill some, some of the Vision 2040 requirements. But just to be clear, if council desires staff to work on this item this year, we need to find the budget funds to do that, and it's a big-ticket item, because we currently don't have those funds.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So, just so I'm clear, you said that you could do some in-house staff time this year in anticipation of a budget line item for hiring a consultant next year.
That's correct.
So, you're asking us here in this to authorize...
Do some of those really outreach efforts to stakeholders in the, in the area, yes, that's correct.
And do you think that, because I'm hearing what Councilmember Freed is saying about his vision for, you know, a six-month concerted effort, or, you know, a fixed amount of time of concerted effort, do you see the city taking the same approach that they did with the Downtown Master Plan, with, you know, convening a citizens advisory group and have, you know, and involving stakeholders that way? Are you kind of seeing a parallel process that we did in downtown for up at Canyon Park?
I think we envision a similar process, yes. We certainly need to engage stakeholders in that area. And of course, in Canyon Park, stakeholders are, for the most part, business owners, but also, I think we need to engage other stakeholders, such as citizens and other users of the area, employees.
Because our, we had a, we had a, I forget the acronyms.
We had a Blue Ribbon Committee, I think.
Well, we had a, we had a whole bunch of people that were interested.
Downtown Stakeholders Group.
The DSRG, that's right, the DSRG.
Resource Group, Downtown Stakeholders Resource Group.
And that was a part of a larger group, which was the Downtown Action Committee.
Correct.
And so, there were quite a number of people from all backgrounds that were interested, and I imagine we'll have the same interest up there.
Correct. So, as you've, and I think you can already see that, that effort that's involved in that is huge. We anticipate that we would probably need to engage all of our planning staff to do that. So, we can, we can certainly begin that process and work on that, but, but some of these other items won't get done. And that's where the prioritization, the policy decision from council has to, has to weigh some of these up at some point, I think.
Well, I'm in support of when staff has completed the other mandated higher priority items, if they have staff time left over to do the, you know, to start the in-house visioning process, then yeah, I totally support that. And then, you see taking that to Planning Commission? I don't even know what that really is, but...
I'm not even sure if that part of the process may not even involve Planning Commission. It may simply be outreach.
Okay. So, you're just asking for an initiative, initiation of in-house visioning activity?
Yes, and I think, as, again, I'll just, I'll just note that our recommendation also includes the anticipation of coming to council with a budget request for 1718.
Good. Councilmember Spivey? Councilmembers, baby.
Great, thank you, Mayor. This is something that I've been asked, asking for, for several years now. And it doesn't say this in here, Gary, but, and we talked at the retreat that to include all the way up to Thrasher's Corner.
Yes.
Correct? And, and I'm, I'm supportive of starting this process this year under knowing really that this is probably going to be a four- or five-year process. And, because it was with the downtown, it was a very extensive process, it was a few years. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this, and I agree with Josh here that I think starting it in some way this year, as, as even as Councilmember Sandberg mentioned, when the workload lightens, start it this year, let's get it going, get to those budget requests. But I just want to make sure that we are, and maybe when this comes back, it, in parentheses or something, expresses up to the city limits of Thrasher's Corner along the 527 corridor, because that's, that's really the, the vision I had when I've been pushing for this, and I think we talked about it again.
We did, and that's the direction I heard from council at, at the retreat, I think.
Great, thank you.
So we did not extend the meeting, and it's 9:07. City Attorney, are we done? Because we didn't extend it before nine o'clock.
I think that the council can waive its, it can vote to waive its own rules. You have a rule that says the meeting ended at nine. So you would have to have a, a, I believe it's actually a supermajority to waive your rules and go forward with the meeting. Technically, it ended at nine, but I don't anticipate any real issues with you continuing if you choose, if the council is, is in agreement that the, the rules should be waived and the meeting extended.
Do you have a motion to waive the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded in discussion on the motion?
Are we going to take a step after that? Can I make a motion?
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. And raise your hand, sorry. Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously. Can we make a motion after nine o'clock to extend the meeting? Councilmember Freed?
Yeah, so I actually would like to extend the meeting until 10 o'clock and retroactively include items from nine o'clock until this point as part of the record.
Second.
Second, okay. So the motion is to continue the meeting until 10:00 PM and include the discussion that has occurred since 9:00 PM until 10:00 PM? Is that about what you said?
Yes.
Good. Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed? Sorry about that, you guys. I usually try to keep track of the time. Okay, so is there any more discussion on this item? Item number seven. Deputy Mayor?
So I have a question. Transfer development rights is included in, in this, and is there any way we can work on it prior to dealing with the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center?
Well, we have done some prior work on TDR. We have a, a, an analysis done by a consultant for both the King and Snohomish County portions of the city. But, but tying it into the Regional Growth Center work really requires them to be, I, I, I think it'd be putting the cart before the horse a little bit if we tried to tackle the TDR first. And I think it would also be a staff resource issue. The TDR has proven to be an exceptionally complex issue. So I'd be loath to, to separate them if we, if we didn't have to.
Councilmember Freed?
You'd be loathe to separate them if you didn't have to? I have a hard time seeing the TDR associated with Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. I see that as a different type of consultant that would be advising on that. I'd rather see that associated with affordable housing.
Well, the reason TDR is attached to the Regional Growth Center is that the Canyon Park area is a, has potential as a, as a TDR receiving area. So I think any, any Plan and Code Amendments to the, to the Regional Growth Center could potentially include a TDR program. And certainly, house, affordable housing would be a component of the Regional Growth Center Plan and Code Amendments as well.
That's a fair comment.
Anybody else would like to speak to this item? So just, I have a quick question. Is there funding that we can get from PSRC to help us do our master planning of a Regional Growth Center?
We're looking into that right now. There doesn't appear to be very many opportunities, but we'll certainly keep looking at them. And if we can identify opportunities, we'll, we'll go after them.
Okay. So what I heard from the council, I think, or a majority of council, is that we want to initiate this, have staff look at it in 2016, and have the Planning Commission potentially take it up if budget allows in 2017. Does that sound about right? Capturing what we want to do? Councilmember Freed?
Yeah, I guess I'm just very cautious of having staff spend, spend time on things and having meetings with potential stakeholders without a consultant online first. I'd like to have a consultant as leading through the process, because our staff has a lot of things on their plate.
So you want to wait till 2017 at the earliest, then?
Well, I had suggested actually have a consultant come on earlier, which would have to look to our city manager and pull from this year for phase one of this, probably $50,000 this year, and maybe $150,000 for next year's exercise. So that would be my recommendation and hope that we could actually have a consultant jumpstart this year in September, October, November timeframe, and lay the course for a very concerted effort in beginning months of next year. Staff is very busy, but I don't want to wait until 2017 to pull a consultant on. So.
City Manager, did you want to respond to that?
Well, I'd like to spend some more time, maybe another meeting, by the next meeting, being able to deliver a schedule and then a potential funding source. So if you'd allow me a week to consider that further, Mayor.
So would everybody be comfortable if we pull item seven and put it on the agenda? We don't meet next week, but at our next meeting?
Yes.
Pull item seven off the docket? Can we do that? Can we do that? City Attorney?
Yeah, I don't know of any reason why you couldn't.
So it looks like we're going to pull item seven, okay. To be discussed at the next available meeting. Item eight.
So item eight is the, under the, first item under the heading that I've called Plan and/or Code Amendments To Address Deficiencies In The Regulations. The first is an item that council is aware of, to consider implementing land use development tools such as lot clustering, lot size averaging, and others, including rounding up of density calculations, to decrease impervious surface, increase natural vegetation retention, including trees, and preserve open space within developments. And the intention would be to also look at the city's existing tree preservation regulations within this item. Staff recommends that council initiate the proposed code amendments and assign them to the Planning Commission for hearing deliberation and recommendation back to council in 2017. And I, I think we, we simply don't have the staff resources to tackle the mandated items that we've gone through, as well as this item this year, or even early next year.
So you want to change your staff recommendation, then?
No, I, I, I think the staff recommendation says, recommendation back to council in 2017. I probably didn't word it well in any of these proposed motions. Staff's intention was to start work on it and bring it back to council in 2017.
And you have time for that?
I think, well, as I said earlier in the, in the presentation, typically what we've done in the past is, I, I think we're hearing what your top priority items are, and then if you initiate this, we will work this into the work program behind those others. Unless council tells us that this is a, a higher, higher priority than something you've already discussed.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Gary, is, is this more important than signs, or less important? Is this more important than Canyon Park Regional Growth Center initiation, visioning, initiating, or less important? Because now we're getting down to, the mandated items are already going to take up your time, Planning Commission's time. And so then we have to talk about which ones of the, of the unmandated ones are you going to tackle first?
Well, that's a good question. Obviously, if we don't tackle the PSRC item in, in reasonable fashion, they're going to, they're going to keep sending us letters. I'm not sure, to be honest with you, what action they might take beyond that, but I know we'll keep getting letters. Whether it's more important than the, the sign issue, I think is a difficult decision to make. I think the city attorney and I have already weighed in on what, what potential liability we might have. I think you could probably make a policy decision that, that, that this item might be more important. But again, I think it's a policy issue.
Well, I mean, I think clustering and tree retention are important items. I think, isn't tree retention the next one? Or did it get wrapped in? I forget.
It's wrapped.
It's wrapped.
Yes.
It was separate last time around. I mean, I think they're, I think they're really important.
I think it makes sense to conclude tree preservation in this.
Yeah. I just, we, we have to be sensitive to, to reality here. And I know that, well, I worked on lot clustering years ago, and that took a ton of time. Maybe it would take less time now, because times have changed, people's opinions have changed. I mean, I can remember when we were talking about a 5,000-square-foot lot, people fell out of their chairs. And now that's, that's pretty standard. So I, I guess I, I'm thinking it, it's below priority of both signs and the, the Regional Growth Center planning. But I'd be interested to hear what other people say, what other council members say. I mean, we do have to, we do have to prioritize. And I think this other, those other ones, especially getting started on visioning for the Regional Growth Center is important.
Councilmember Freed?
So in years past, this would be an item that you would avoid having in an election year, because it was so incredibly unpopular. And I think entire councils were overturned. Trish, you'll have to remind me, Councilmember Sandberg. But it was really contentious. But what I love is the Planning Commission unanimously came together in support of an idea that I think everybody can get behind. My hope is, as this council, that we are unified in this idea that the environment can be protected, development can occur, affordable housing can be provided. There's a lot of good things that can come out of this number eight item. And if we're unified together, we see it as an importance, I think we can do it in 2017, an election year.
I, I wasn't even thinking about election year, but.
You get a lot of people upset, but it, it's.
It does.
Taking down the misinformation and telling the truth and just being straightforward. I think it could be a positive experience.
I, I agree, but then which, which one do you think is more important? Clustering and tree retention, or planning for Regional Growth Center? Because Gary told us it's going to take a ton of staff time. We know it's going to take a ton of staff time.
I am always an economic development person, so I go with the Regional Growth Center.
Uh-huh. Okay. I mean, I, I, that's the way I feel, too. So, you know, maybe put it on the docket for 2017 if, if we get to it? But it's, it's funny, you know, now we're, we're planning all the way out to 2017, and what's going to happen on the 2017 docket in March of next year?
Well, maybe we don't bring you a docket next year.
I doubt it.
Or if we do, it's a very small docket.
So the support from Councilmember Freed and Councilmember Sandberg is initiate Planning Commission 2017 for item number eight. Is there any more discussion? Deputy Mayor?
I actually think it's more important than signs and PRSC, because this is throughout Bothell. It's not just a section of Bothell. I don't know if it's more important than, I guess I'm, what I'm saying is, I think it actually might be more important than Canyon Park visioning, or on par. So I don't, I don't want it to go to 2017.
So you're recommending PC in 2016? Does anybody support moving it up to Planning Commission in 2016? Just staring at me. No? No? I don't think you have a majority support on that one. So I also support initiating the Planning Commission in 2017. I think 2017's fine. There's a couple of pieces of property that, anyways, regardless, it's after nine. Okay, so yeah, I support the Planning Commission in 2017. Item number nine.
These are miscellaneous code amendments related to the downtown subarea regulations. As you can see in your matrix, there are a number of them. Since we adopted the downtown plan and regulations, as council is aware, we have continually made tweaks to them as we've developed properties downtown. Items come up, issues come up, and, and we've made revisions to the code. Staff recommends that council initiate consideration of the above proposed, proposed code amendments. Refer them to the Planning Commission for hearing deliberation and recommendation back to the council in 2017. I think these are, I think these are probably items that we can take care of in a relatively short span of time. The one exception might be, might be the parking issue, which I think might take a little bit more analysis.
So this is kind of a filler item, you'll fit in when you can, kind of thing?
That's our, I think that's our feeling, is that when we, when we can see a gap and a, and a staff person, most likely Dave Boyd will, will fit these in.
And this does include the parking downtown?
It's in the list, yes.
Because that's been a big issue. Anybody have an opinion? So the staff recommendation is initiate to Planning Commission in 2016? Is that correct, Gary?
2017.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're not going to dock it anything next year. Deputy Mayor?
So regarding C, removing the density limit in the downtown district, what does this mean?
I'm going to have Dave respond to that for you.
Initially, none of the recommended downtown districts had a density limit. They were all limited by the height and setback requirements. Late in the process, council did impose a 20-unit-per-acre density limit on the downtown transition district. In 2014, we received a, a request to, to lift that, and Planning Commission recommended lifting that. Be cut from properties, particularly small infill properties, that there just wasn't, with that limit, there wasn't enough capacity to, to justify redevelopment. And again, council chose to lift it on portion, a part of that area. So since that was done fairly recently, we wouldn't normally bring this back, but we have, since then, we have had inquiries about potential development in, along the base of West Hill, on the west edge of the downtown subarea. And many of those properties are already above 20 units per acre, so redeveloping doesn't make much sense. And we see this as a potential for providing a nexus with affordable housing. So lifting the density limit, but imposing an affordable housing requirement in that area.
But where's affordable housing on the docket right now?
The, well.
I'm trying to keep up with, because again, this is another upzone.
Right. So all of the upzones that we're considering now, Nike Hill, South Riverside, we're having the affordable housing discussion. That will have to go along with some citywide provisions for affordable housing, but I think we could tackle that affordable housing component for this potential upzone within the timeframe that you've discussed.
So, last question. Zero density, does that include apodments? I mean, no, no density requirement, does that also include apodments?
Not the way that our current, well, it would be very difficult to develop apodments with our current parking requirement that's based on parking spaces per bedroom. Apodments have been controversial when, well, one, one area where they've been controversial is when people create multiple one-bedroom or studio apartments with a shared kitchen and call it a single-dwelling unit and park it as a single-dwelling unit. That's not possible in the downtown transition district with our parking requirement.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmembers, Sandberg?
I have a similar concern about item C and hearing the staff explanation of that. I, I would recommend that if we move forward with these miscellaneous code amendments and item number nine, that we, we do not move forward with the discussion on removing the density.
the density limit. And we, like, like Dave said, that we, the council had considered this previously, and I can tell you that if, if we're talking about the base of West Hill, those residents were very vocal during the downtown master planning process, very protective of their downtown transition district. And I think we would introduce a lot of headache and length in the process if we were to proceed with C.
So would you recommend initiate, okay, item number nine, initiating it to PC, striking item C in 2017? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing, Deputy Mayor? Okay. Is there support for that? Okay, I think we have a majority. Okay. So initiate Planning Commission 2017 and removing item C from it. And everybody's, there's a whole nother page, so D, E, F, and G, everybody's okay with that, though, right? Okay.
Well, I don't know about the parking. We're not gonna look at parking for another year? That's a huge issue. I, I get emails about it all the time. I'd rather pull parking out and have it done this year and make it separate.
You know what we could do is, since we are having another item come back for, study further before deciding, maybe, maybe we have this one come back and piece it out? Does that seem...
Councilmember Freed?
I, we talked about parking, I think just last year, didn't we? I don't think that, people are gonna complain about parking, people are gonna complain about traffic. We are a growing region. I think that this is something that needs to go off for next year. There is plenty that we need to discuss. So I'm not in favor of that.
I would just say that when, when the community development director was asked, is our current parking ordinance working? He said no.
Tom is gonna make a comment.
Councilmember Agnew?
Excuse me. I think our director is on...
That, Tom. Community Development Director?
Hi. Mayor and council, as I recall, last time we had a workshop on this topic, the council asked us to queue up a presentation in May on, on, on discussion of downtown parking. You may wanna have a placeholder in 2016 in case that workshop results in some changes to the code for parking. Also, I'd also recommend item number B is certainly important to the Gateway project as well, which I'm sure they, they are interested in seeing moved forward in 2016.
What is the, the Gateway South project? I was under the impression that Gateway was completed.
The development group that, that took on the Village of Beardsley Crossing development and the completion of that has assembled some properties to the southwest of there, along Beardsley Avenue, and they're proposing a housing development on the, on that site. And they've had a pre-application conference, but they are not planning on submitting permit plans until later this year. And we're hoping that this, this height measurement amendment might move forward before that goes forward, and that, that was one of the letters that you received tonight. And I, I would say that staff has also struggled with, the, the way we measure height in the downtown plan is it's a slope top box that follows the contours. And it, the rationale behind it was sound, that you don't have, wind up with a seven-story building on one side and a four-story building on the other side. But it's, it's been difficult to administer. It's difficult for applicants because they're using a different method for determining height per the IBC. It's based on an average elevation and a flat top box. And also, given our topography, as the letter from those, the developers from Vera Architects pointed out, the single-family areas are on the uphill, surrounding the, the taller zoned areas in the middle. So the slope top box basically creates a taller building next to those, and we had to put in some provisions to, to mitigate that. But the method that we're talking about would create a lower building on the uphill side and a taller building on the downhill side toward the higher density.
So just real quick, you guys, we have a whole nother agenda item about park fees, and there's, there's consultants here that are waiting to present to us on the park impact So I don't know if we should, should we postpone this? See, we already closed the public hearing, that's why you guys didn't wanna close the public hearing. We could postpone making this decision till our next meeting, or we could pause and let them go so that they don't have to go through this? Can we, is there any opinion on the council? Councilmember Freed?
Yes, we actually have citizens that are here, present, that have put requests to this council I'd like to take up before we have the consultants come in.
So you wanna continue with this agenda?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, these folks have waited. It's 9:30.
Does anybody else have an opinion on this?
I...
No, on, do we, do we move forward with this item, or do we pause and allow the parking study session, study session to go? I'm sorry, parks mitigation fee study session to go?
Why don't we have, why don't we delay the discussion for A and B like we did the other item to next week?
How about item number nine, we just defer?
Okay, we can, yeah.
Okay. Study further before setting. All right. And if we could, please hurry up our discussion on this, if, if possible.
Item number 10 is a miscellaneous housekeeping code amendment to look at the definition for residential care facilities. Currently, our, our definition is not consistent with the state definition. They use a different term. That's created a lot of confusion for staff and applicants. I think this is a very quick fix. We would propose initiating it and putting it in with the downtown planning code amendments, or sorry, the downtown code amendments and bring them all together. Whenever you decide to do the downtown code amendments.
So you'd recommend that we defer this until we take up the downtown code amendments?
I, I think you could initiate it, but whatever downtown code amendment you end up initiating, we would bring it with those. It sounds like your, the council is willing to downtown, initiate some of those downtown code amendments, but perhaps not all of them.
So you can combine this and bring it back when we take up the deferred items?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 11?
Item number 11 is the Everest LLC amendments. You received testimony on this evening. The applicant has requested planning code amendments to amend the plan designation and implementing zoning for the subject property from office professional to residential activity center, office professional, and community business. Staff recommendation is to not initiate the requested planning code amendments. So the map just shows the, the general location and the surrounding zoning of the subject parcels. I have a more detailed ortho photo that shows the, all of the parcels in question, which includes Everest and Kids Country. You can see the OP on the yellow parcels indicates the office professional. The ortho photo also shows the surrounding zoning of R9600 to the west and south and across 228th to the north, and then more intense zoning in the Canyon Park area to the east. Staff's basis for recommending, for recommending not considering this further is that we, we simply believe that the, the current designation is the appropriate one for the parcels. When we did the subarea plan for this area, as, it made sense to staff and council at the time that as you, as you moved further west and up the hill and got out of the Canyon Park Activity Center, that it made sense to have some transition between that and the single-family residential further up the hill, which is, which is how the office professional designation ended up. I'm not sure that staff is in, in agreement with the, the speaker either, that assigning an RAC and CB designation to the parcels would not necessarily result in, in higher traffic volumes. I think there are some uses, particularly within the CB, the commercial business or community business designation, that could potentially result in higher traffic yields. And as council is well aware, the intersection of 527 and 228 is, is probably the most challenged intersection in the city. Given that we just went through a, a major plan update in 2015 and visited all of the subareas, we feel that, that this item has already been looked at, and our recommendation, again, is to not initiate.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I agree with the staff's recommendation, and I think that we need to be very deliberate about making sure that our RAC zones are compact, and, and I'm very concerned about the spread as it marches out into our single-family neighborhoods. And it is surrounded on three sides by single-family neighborhood, and so I do support the staff's recommendation. I think office professional is an appropriate zone, transition zone for that area.
Anybody else have a comment? You support staff recommendation?
Councilmember Freed?
I'm open to a different designation that potentially allows for an alternative or additional use on there besides an office park next to one of our largest residential zonings, meaning R9600. It seems odd that we want an office building directly next to R9600 residential use component to that as a transition would be appropriate. So...
So are you recommending like a residential component?
Councilmember Sandberg, let's not do the OP.
Back and forth, please.
I'm recommending a residential component that would allow for some type of transition if the owner allows for that, and maybe the requested residential and commercial to allow that type of mixed use on the site. There is, as we see here on the east side of the site, they have created an intersection there to allow direct access appropriately. And I know Kids Country has been a very vibrant member of our community and a good business member here that has been contributing and successfully providing services to many families. So I'd like to see that we can consider this, especially since we only have two, two requests from our citizens here within the city. The rest are really ones that we, as a council, have decided to put forward. But when we wanna be a council that wants to listen to the community, here's two opportunities where folks have come to us to make direct requests of this council. So I'd like if we could consider residential use, and maybe we can't make that decision tonight, and this could be something that comes back at our next meeting as we meet with the person that's requesting. If we feel RAC is too dense, maybe our staff could go spend this next week or two, meeting with the person making the request. That's my recommendation and request.
So you'd recommend to defer?
I'd recommend that I would like to docket for this year. I would go forward with request of RAC, but I don't sense this council is gonna be in support of that. So maybe something a little bit less dense on the OP zoning would be appropriate, R4000 or something.
Deputy Mayor?
Gary, you can tell me if you can't answer this. I believe that there was some discussion of the added traffic impact. So to add a residential component, how would that impact traffic?
I'll be honest with you, we haven't done any specific traffic analysis for, for a residential component. The, the RAC designation would essentially add a residential component without a density cap, other than, excuse me, what would be allowed within the height limit and building I think in the initial discussions between planning and public works, the larger concern perhaps revolves around potential community business uses. But I, I can't honestly stand here tonight and tell you that any particular residential, what the traffic impact from any specific residential use might be without, without looking at it further.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm a little bit torn because we have some really big issues. So I, I guess I'm open to hearing more in a couple weeks if, if that, everyone agrees with that.
So you support Councilmember Freed's option to defer this to next week?
Yes.
All right, we've gotta split here, then. Councilmember Neal?
Does staff have any recommendations besides the current zoning and what could go there?
No, we've, we've reacted to the request and, and not really looked at the request for, for any other, any other potential options. One action council could take would be to initiate the request and have the Planning Commission explore, explore other options. I mean, that would be another possibility. That process has its own, its own difficulties and potential dangers, that you get into a, sort of an unknown process as to how you come up with a, what might be the appropriate use. And part of the other, frankly, part of the, a large part of staff's recommendation on this was simply that, given all of the other items on the docket, we felt that this, this didn't rise to the level where it was something we really need to do on this docket. To be perfectly honest, we feel that the, the existing designation provides opportunities and is appropriate. So it's a, it's a resource and time issue as well.
And are you reviewing other, any other properties in that area?
Not at the current time until we get into the regional growth center planning that, you know, another thing we could do is look at designations as part of that process, since it's, it's immediately adjacent to the regional growth center.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that.
Supportive of what?
Of having them look at it at the same time. As part of the regional growth center analysis.
So you want to initiate this, or you wanna follow the staff recommendation?
I'll follow staff's recommendation.
Okay. Councilmember Spivey, did you want to chime in? I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, but...
I, I was supportive of Councilmember Freed's idea of a compromise, if you will, and bringing it back.
So I think that's, that's for to support the staff recommendation, I believe. Okay, so item number 12?
Item number 12 is a, is the Williamson request. You heard from Mr. Williamson this evening. They are requesting planning code amendments to amend the plan designation and implementing zoning on three parcels from R9,600, which is about four dwelling units per acre, single-family, to R7,200, which is about six single-family units per acre for 2.16 acres. And there is the, an ortho photo showing the location of the Williamson property in relationship to the Safeway site and the Milot property where the cursor is. You can see where that road extension would run through that Mr. Williamson noted. The staff recommendation on this item is to consider initiating it, but on the 2017 docket, simply because of, of staff resources and time. We feel their, their, the request is moderate, and there may be some merit to it, but I don't think it's something that staff can get to immediately.
And you, you're recommending to Planning Commission, initiate Planning Commission 2017?
Well, we're recommending bringing it back in on 2017 docket for reconsideration to initiate the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So can you say again, so a few years ago, this is now coming to mind, there is a, there is a planned connecting road between 7th and the Bothell Everett High Highway, which is essentially an extension of 242nd that goes through and sort of bisects the Williamson property? Because that's really the closest way for it to go. It can't go due west because there's already homes there.
That's correct, so it's...
So it goes on the southern boundary of the Williams, Williamson property?
I believe so. It involves the Williamson property and the property to the south of the Williamsons. This property is owned, R7,200 now. The Williamsons are the extreme southeast corner of a very large R9,600 block that extends quite far north.
Councilmember Freed?
Absolutely in favor. I recall, it's been a while since I've seen the road, but the road goes right through that property and definitely impacts that property. And R9,600 is not four units. We used to have R4 in the city, but councils in the... We used to have our four in the city, but councils in the past changed that. It's really 3.5. Our 7200 is 4.8.
Those are historic yields, and I'm speaking in gross terms, so we're both correct.
All right, so I'm certainly in favor of bringing this forward again. This is initiated request. I want to let our citizens know that this is a council that hears their voice. I'd like to see this initiated this year and not be told that we have other more important things to do, rather than tell you that you need to wait until we're done. So I recommend an I to PC and an A in 2016. Thank you.
Councilmembers Spivey?
I agree with Councilmember Freed. Actually, these folks have been kind of waiting for a while as it is. This road goes through to 88th, and it, and I believe it connects up at about the county line. I think it was considered the 205th extension, if I remember correctly. And so it kind of snakes its way up there. But so this has been going, essentially going on since the whole Safeway project was proposed, and I think it's only fair to these people, since they initiated this, to move forward with it and to get some resolution. By putting that proposed roadway in there, we've essentially put an encumbrance on them that I'd like to see that we go through this process and come to some decision one way or the other. But I think we need to initiate it to the Planning Commission this year.
Okay, there's two for that, Planning Commission this year?
I agree with Councilmember Freed and Spivey. I think they've waited their time, they've been very patient, and it's time to move on with this.
I agree with them too, so that's the majority, but Councilmember Samberg?
I agree too, but I think that when we're talking about initiating and that they've been waiting patiently, we need to make clear that it's still a process, there are still neighbors to be notified and involved in the public process, and I think it's another instructive situation where we have planned for a road, much like we did the 39th Avenue Connector, and created a lot of downstream issues. And so I think we need to be really careful of that moving forward because there are impacts that we don't necessarily plan for. So I'm in favor of initiating it, though in my opinion it's a lower priority, so later in the year, with knowing that there's going to be a public involvement process where people can weigh in on this as well.
If I could note too, for council, that this does involve a plan amendment, so that falls into that one-time-a-year plan amendment thing. So if we're going to do it this year, we're going to have to really get this one moving and put staff resources to it so that we can bring it back with Nike Hill, South Riverside, and Fitzgerald, and that's going to be a challenge for us. Other things, we'll have to take a backseat.
Councilmember McNeil?
So I'm in support of the staff recommendation, but I did have a question on the zoning. You said the south property is zone 7200, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then everything on the same side of the block heading north, is that 9600?
Yes, that's correct.
And on the, would be the west side of that block, is all 9600 as well?
Yes, that's correct. You can see the purple line there, which is the zoning boundary.
Okay, and so that would be the only parcel zone 7200 north of that purple line?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think we have completed, so I'm going to go through this, and then hopefully a motion. Actually, should we entertain a motion to extend now?
I make a motion that we extend the meeting till 10:30?
I'll second it. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Passage unanimously.
Before we do our summary, can we go on then to our consultants for the park impact fee study and then come back to a summary?
I'll make it really quick.
Okay.
Okay, so what I've got on my record here, let me just scroll up, let's just take the longest part. Item number one is to initiate to the Planning Commission in 2016, which is the municipal stormwater permit, critical areas ordinance, FEMA, storm line master program amendments. Item number two is the code amendments regarding the impact fee deferrals in response to state law, and this initiate City Council 2016. Item number three, potential planning code amendments to address outcomes of a collaborative process regarding the Fitzgerald low-impact development overlay regulations, initiate City Council 2016 ASAP. Item number four, planning code amendments to respond to the Puget Sound Regional Council, follow up on our 2015 periodic planning code update, initiate planning commission 2017. Number five, review the sign code, initiate planning commission 2017. Six, review and update the housing strategy plan, code amendments, affordable housing, code amendments for response to the PSRC recommendations to, initiate City Council 2016. That's item number six. And item number seven, we are going to study further before deciding. Item number eight, initiate planning commission 2017, which is code amendments to implement land use development tools such as lot clustering, lot sizing, averaging, and to decrease impervious surface, increase natural vegetation. Item number six, or I'm sorry, item number nine, we're going to study further before deciding. Item number 10, defer to, hold on a second. Let's see, this has to keep being code amendment, so same thing, defer, study further before deciding. And number 11...
That was number 10?
That was number 10.
I thought that was initiate planning commission 2016, pretty short. Number 10, regarding residential care facility, assisted living facility?
That was bring back with whatever planning, downtown code amendments council initiates.
Yeah. That's what I, is that what people recall? Okay. Number 11, planning code amendments for property located at 228th and 7th, and is do not initiate. Item number 12 is planning code amendments for property located at 24319, 7th Avenue Southeast, and we initiate planning commission 2016. If you agree with that, make a motion to pass it, please. Moved by Councilmember Freed, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, say aye, and raise your hand, aye, opposed? Passage unanimously. Sorry to our consultants for running behind, but now we will open AB 16-048, study session regarding the methodology for park impact fees.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. John Keats here, Parks and Recreation. I'd like to introduce to you briefly Randy Young and Michaela Jellico, our consultants from Community Attributes. We're prepared, I know it's late, we're prepared to kind of improvise here with your concurrence. Randy suggested just to get up and not even fire up the PowerPoint, so if you want to approach that way, we're certainly willing to do so, given the late nature of the evening. But I can tell you that presently, we started this process in December, brought on the consultant team. We've had a couple staff meetings, we've done a lot of research, working with the consultant. Last Thursday night, we had a presentation to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and I think you know, but park impact fees haven't been updated since 1997, hence the reasoning for bringing this forward. So I can start, fire up the PowerPoint if you'd like, otherwise I could just turn over the floor to Randy and have him give an abbreviated presentation.
So it's a 20-minute study session item, so if you guys want to, no, not even that long, huh? Could we get your PowerPoint presentation emailed to us?
I'm exactly headed in that direction, Mayor. My name's Randy Young, part of the Community Attributes team. Given the lateness of the hour, I think I should just start with a reminder that this was never planned as a decision-making item, as a study session item, and you as council member knows that, but for the brave souls who are still up with us this evening at this hour watching, I think they're entitled to know, and those who are in the audience are entitled to know, that this item is early in the process, that we'll be back again with more information for you and opportunities for the public to speak on it. And so this was merely going to be a briefing, and I think an easy way to think about it is if you were going to build a house, you'd have to design it first, you need the architect to draw it before you get the carpenters and the electricians going. And tonight was going to be the architects showing what the house might look like, and you could go, yeah, but can you move this roofline, or you can put the window over here kind of stuff? There's a memo that you have from us with 16 design features, and just to mention one or two as an example that might ring a bell for you. You currently have a system that uses zones, and the nice thing about zones, when you collect park impact fees, is you're going to spend them within that zone. The bad news is if you don't collect enough money in that zone, you have to refund it within the state law 10 years, and you have had to do that. You actually collected the money from somebody who really didn't want to pay it, but they knew it was going to go to build them a new park, but we didn't have a big enough pot of money to build the projects. So that's one of the things we'd like to redesign in your house, is to come back to you and rethink the whole zone business, as a for instance. There's 15 other items in the memo. What I'm going to suggest, Mayor, is that we do provide you electronically a copy of the PowerPoint, you can look at it at your leisure, and your director is available for funneling any questions that you might have or clarifications that you'd like to bring to our attention. We'd be happy to provide them back to you by email or in writing or whatever, but not slow down our calendar either, because we're on a commitment to the staff to wrap this up this year, actually sort of more like mid-year, in order to make it available to you later in the year. And rather than delay that by having us come back at another time to go through this, I think the memo speaks for itself. Having said that, I'm also mindful that you have adopted a formal new adjournment time that may be looming moments from now, and I don't want to put you, no, you've got another...
We extended it till 10:30.
10:30, okay. Well, then if you would like my slow presentation, I can, Mayor, I'm at your disposal. We're not in a hurry to get out of here. It's really up to you and the council whether you want to see the PowerPoint tonight, or just go to questions for any of you who did have a chance to skim the memo if there's something on your mind.
What would you like to do? Does anybody want to watch the PowerPoint presentation, or should we just get to questions on the memo?
I'd like to hear the PowerPoint. I mean, it's richer when there's somebody talking about it.
If you'd like to do it, we'd like to hear it.
Okay. Well, John is firing it up. The first couple slides are going to be sort of impact fee 101, to remind us all what our state law makes us do and prohibits us from doing, and then we'll get to the memo and the 16 recommendations of what the house should look like, or in this case, what the new park impact fee would look like. Terrific, great, thank you. So we're going to talk about what impact fees are, and then the 16 methodology issues that we have, one slide about our schedule, and then any questions that you might have. So to define terms, an impact fee, which you have for parks and for transportation, your park one you developed in 1997, so we're coming up on 20 years since it's had a fresh look. But for anybody who doesn't know what this thing is, anybody who has to pay it only pays it once. It's not like an annual tax or an ongoing payment, and it's paid only by that portion of our economy that brings us economic development. It's the new development. So the downside is we're penalizing them, but the upside is we're penalizing them because they're creating an impact on our transportation or park networks, and the question is who's going to pay for that impact? Should it be the existing taxpayers? It should be the people who are coming in and creating the impacts. When new development makes that payment, it goes into a special pot. It's not just tax money that disappears into the government's coffers. It has to be used to build new parks that benefit the new development, and specifically, it has to be needed by new development. We cannot charge a park impact fee and then use it to take care of an existing deficiency, a problem that we already own for the current population. It has to be a direct connection between this fee and the needs that new development bring to us. Why do we do this? Why do governments get into this business? Well, it produces money that helps pay the bills, and if development doesn't make a contribution, then we're solely reliant on either grants, somebody else's money, which is very competitive and hard to get, or local tax dollars, which means that the folks who are already here and have their park system are then buying the parks for the next folks. As a matter of policy, some cities also charge the fees because they want growth to make a contribution. It often isn't 100% of what the cost could be, but it might be 50 or 25 or 75%. Point is to have growth have some skin in the game. And then last but not least, a good park system makes Bothell the kind of place that, as one of the council members pointed out this evening, is being recognized for a really great place to live, and the park system contributes to that. What can we buy with an impact fee? I already mentioned it has to be capital, okay? It's paying for something that in the law, that's why the phrase is in quotes, "system improvements." It's a legal term that means that it's part of the major park network, and by contrast, what it cannot pay for is its opposite in the law, something called a project improvement. That doesn't mean a park project, it means a development project. So if you approve a subdivision, and the subdivider says, well, I'm going to have 30 homes, and they're going to have a homeowners association, and they're going to have some community property that they're going to maintain, and it's for their use, that may be great, it might serve recreational purposes, they might like it a lot, but we can't use impact fees to pay for that, nor if they put that in there, is it a credit against our impact fees. Only if they gave us a major parcel that would be a citywide park, would it be a credit. Other thing we cannot pay for that is capital, but it's fixing up old, broken capital. So if we've got a ball field, it's got some old wooden bleachers and they're falling apart, and we've got a good price on some nice new aluminum bleachers, good for us, but not with impact fees. Except this is where, let's say the bleachers can seat 50 people, and the new aluminum bleachers can serve 100, we could pay for 50% of that with impact fees and 50% out of another pot, okay? So some rules. Any good state law is going to be full of sort of mind-boggling fine print. This one is RCW 8202.05020100. And if you have insomnia, I really encourage you to read this, it'll take care of your insomnia problems. I've reduced basically six or eight pages of really detailed law to some simple, understandable rules. Rule number one, we call the fair share. What it means is growth can be charged for growth's impacts, growth cannot be charged for a problem we already have, an existing deficiency, okay? And it's very clear, and one of our jobs as your technical advisors, to make sure that we keep you from breaking that law by making it very clear what growth is buying, and if there are deficiencies, how it's being funded, not with growth's money. Rule number two, these are again phrases in that law. These fees have to be reasonably needed, the parks have to be reasonably needed, and the amount of the fee has to be the proportional share to each development. Again, trying for some plain English here, what we mean by that is the amount of money we charge has to be proportional to the amount of impact that's created. The way you do that right now is you have five different categories of residential property that pay your park impact fee, and each category pays a different amount than the other four. So a single-family house pays a different amount than a three- or four-unit apartment building, or different than a five-unit apartment building, or different than mobile homes, and there's a fifth category in there. We'll have different strategies for dealing with this, but we will comply with this law that the amount of the fee is proportional to the amount of the impact. Rule number three, which we call the credits rule, means you can't double-charge. If you have new development that's going to be built, and you're going to ask them to pay a park impact fee, but they're also paying some other money that you're using that pays for part of that same park that their impact fee would be paying for, that would be double-dipping, and it's not allowed. So we will learn about your financing system for your parks, and if we find any such funding mechanism, a classic example would be if you had a bond issue, and the new development would clearly be paying the property taxes on the bond issue, so we would calculate what those payments would be, and we would reduce the amount of the impact fee by that amount. Our last rule, we do impact fees all over the country, and every state is unique, and here's Washington's uniqueness. We have this wonderful law that says if you do it right, you can ask growth to pay for growth, except no, you can't. You can calculate what growth's cost is, but you cannot then rely solely on that amount, which in plain English would mean you have to find some other funding. So we said to the legislature, how much? And they said, we don't know and we don't care, just not 100%. Well, okay, 99.9? Sure, if that's what you want. So each city makes up its own compliance, and our job will be back to come back to you with that compliance. So we put into the... So we put into the memo four or five major categories that encompass the 16 recommendations. We've talked first about park ownership, and then development, the pays, and then the basis for the fee, and then implementation issues. I'm going to take you through each of these one at a time. In our memo, the first thing we talk about is what types of parks. You have an amazing park planning document, the ProSAP Plan, which is the abbreviation for it, Park Rec and Open Space Action Plan. And it has a whole bunch of different types of parks, neighborhood and regional and local and skateboard, and, and those are good types. Your current park impact fee just says, well, there's citywide, and there's less than citywide, and that seems a little not helpful. What we think, and we're likely to recommend, and so are, as your architects, our blueprint says, we, we'd like to come back to you with two categories, sort of active and passive. The parks and rec would be the active-use stuff, and then the open space would be the other category. You have obviously a very special interest in this city and open space, and, and we want you to be able to see where that's itemized and treated separately, and has its own budget and its own projects and its own portion of the impact fee. Second thing that we want to talk about is trails. You could include a trail if it's on a park site now, but a well-connected recreational system in this day and age has trails that go between parks. And we don't want them to be mistaken as transportation mechanisms. And we've talked with your transportation folks, and while they're happy to have them there for transportation purposes, transportation purposes is more like getting to work and to shopping and to school. And we're talking about the connectivity of the trail system that's more for personal health and recreational purposes. So we want to bring back and include in your park impact fee update part of the trail network that goes off of the park site. And they would be specific projects, so it wouldn't be this loosey-goosey, I don't know what you're doing with it. It would, it would be based on a trails master plan. So who owns this? Your current park impact fee actually talks about partnering with other agencies, but you haven't actually done this, but you're open to and exposed to them requesting some of your money. And we think that the park impact fee for Bothell should be for Bothell's parks. You can still talk to the school district about access to their school sites. You can talk to regional players and the Burke-Gilman Trail and so on. But we would like to recommend that your park impact fee be about city parks. You have the zones. I mentioned those before. It isn't a great solution. Virtually no city of your size or even substantially larger than you in the state of Washington uses zones for park systems. It's not important how you got there. It's an obsolete idea, and you've been forced to give some money back that could have been put to a good use. We'd like to bring back a citywide system to you. Now let's talk about who pays kind of questions. Right now, you charge your park impact fees to residential development. There are almost 80 cities in Washington that have park impact fees, and only a dozen of them charge park impact fees to commercial development. But there are a dozen of them that do this. And so our recommendation is to let us calculate it both ways, and then you can decide after you see the results, okay? That way you can see all residential, what would that look like? And you can see a mix of residential and commercial and what that would look like, okay? And then whichever one is the best fit for you and your economic development strategies and what the rates would be, I will tell you in advance that if you do charge commercial, it will reduce the residential, okay? Because this is buzz phrase here, a zero-sum game. It's like a piece of pie, okay? And we're going to earn this much money, and if we cut a little piece of that pie out and charge it to businesses, then the houses pay that much less, okay? In the communities that do charge commercial development, the rates are very low. It's not like transportation impact fees. It's like 50 cents a square foot, dollar a square foot kind of stuff. But still, it's 50 cents a square foot or a dollar a square foot. And we think you're going to want to see those choices and be able to decide as a policy question after you see the results. Issue number six, right now you base your fee on the type of residence. As I mentioned before, single families charge different than apartments, charge different than mobile home, and so forth. That's good and widely-used old thinking. The theory was, well, single-family houses have more people than mobile homes, so single-family houses should pay more. And your system works exactly that way. That is statistically true. But it's also true that a big single-family house has more people in it on average than a small single-family house. And so your system, and you're not alone in this, pretty much every other city in the state, basically has small houses subsidizing big ones, because they all pay a flat rate. And that's, sorry, required by law. We cannot base it on the value of the house, but we can base it on the size. And we now have the ability to use census data and create a scale based on the square footage of the residences. And we won't care whether it's an apartment or a mobile home or a house. Big will pay more than small, and we'll bring you the data. And that's what we're proposing to do, is to bring you that data on a size basis for your consideration. Topic number seven, like most cities, you have some exemptions. It needs to be refreshed. It's been almost 20 years. Things have changed. You might want to get rid of some of them. You might want to add some others. You've, I've, we've been sitting out in the lobby and listening to you this evening, and you clearly have some strong interest in affordable housing and your partnership with Arch. And you're allowed to exempt, under a recent amendment to state law, you're allowed to exempt 80% of the impact fee for low-income housing, and you don't have to make it up. You don't have to put money in the bank. Pre-existing law made you, as a city, put the money in the bank on behalf of that housing. Now you can just waive it, so it's no cost to anybody. If you want to do 100% exemption, you'd have to pay for the missing 20%. We'd like to bring that and other updates to the exemptions back to you. So how are these fees calculated? What's the basis for it? Conventional park planning methodology is, uses a vocabulary of acres per 1,000 population. I'm going to show you an example from Kirkland with a little bar chart in a minute. But more modern park impact fees are saying it isn't about the dirt. It's about the dirt plus the improvement on top of the dirt, the ball fields, the backstops, the bleachers, the, the arboretums, the, you know, the trails. Isn't there a way to value it also? And so what we've moved to with many cities, I just finally, after having done Kirkland's land-based system back in the 90s, last year they agreed, and we helped convert them to an investment-per-person basis. So we value everything that you own, and we simply ask new development to match that, okay? And so that's going to be our recommendation, and you'll be able to see how that works when we get to more details. A second question is, should we charge for what we want to be or for what we are? If we try and charge for what we want to be, that's an aspirational, we aspire to that LOS, LOS is a buzz phrase, level of service, okay? If we'd like to be that, then we can only charge new development if we can in fact show how we're going to get that, to that level for our own population. So here's what that looks like in the city of Kirkland a few years ago. Kirkland was using the acres approach of three acre, three acres per thousand population was their standard for neighborhood parks, and an additional three acres per thousand population for their community parks. At the time we did this bar chart in Kirkland, three acres per thousand population meant you needed 102 acres. That's the brown bar on the left side, okay? So brown is what we need. So we then looked at neighborhood parks, and the yellow is what they actually had, and it was less than 102 acres. And the red is what they needed in order to get to the three acres per thousand. In order for Kirkland to charge neighborhood park impact fees, they would have to have had an adopted capital improvement plan that would buy that, those red acres, not from impact fee dollars, and to show how they were going to pay for it. If we couldn't do that, under Washington law, we have to base all these on capital facilities plans. If they couldn't do that, they couldn't charge the park impact fee, and they didn't. Kirkland went without an impact fee for neighborhood parks for most of the last 20 years. But on the community park side, the yellow is the 102 acres of community parks that they did own, and the green is they owned about another 38 acres. So they're allowed to charge impact fees. But wait, they already have the acres, okay? Well, if you think about a utility system, a water or sewer system, where you build the infrastructure and then the customers hook up, as long as Kirkland was using money like a bond issue or something else where they could, they could be visibly repaid by the new development, we're allowed under Washington to have, it's almost like a latecomer agreement, but for impact fees, it's called a reimbursement fee. And so that's where we will take you by switching over to a value-based system and then switching not to an aspirational system of what you'd like to be, but basing it on what you are now. And by the way, your current park impact fee is based on what you were then in 1997. So this is back to our current aspirational. Two other features about how these are charged. You're required by state law to base all this on a capital facilities plan that's adopted. Good news about Bothell, you've got a really robust document. You put a lot of energy in it. It's readable, it's understandable. As a council, you get to go through it in detail. So you're 90% of the way of where you need to be, but you're not 100%. We have some strategies that we'll bring to the staff's attention, and if they like them, they'll bring them to you, that will add to that document and show more about these levels of service and how many acres, and little charts like the one you just saw. So there's a more carefully laid-out, transparent message sent to the public, particularly to the development community. Here's how we connect this fee we're charging you with all these requirements of level of service and capital facilities plans. And the last piece on the, on the basis for the impact fees, and then we're going to deal with the implementation strategies, is what are the other funding sources? Remember the no double-dipping rule, okay? The credits calculation? We've looked at where you've been over recent years. We will look at it for a longer period of time and work with all of your staff, but starting with finance department, to understand more carefully where you think you're going, where you thought you were going when you adopted the last capital improvement plan. We will make sure you won't break any double-dipping rules, and we'll also bring to you attention, to your attention how to focus the money that you do have from other sources on curing any deficiencies you've got, so that you can still charge and collect impact fees for the things you want them for. Last five issues are about implementation. Assuming we've done everything else right, you were briefed earlier this evening during your docket presentation about a state law that requires you to amend your code to deal with deferment of impact fees. That would include transportation and parks. We're aware of it. We won't lead that process. We'll make sure we don't do anything that runs afoul of where staff is headed. And if we have anything useful to share from our experience in other cities, we'll be doing that. But we needed you to know that we'll be part of that effort that you'll be working on defer, the mandatory deferment program. Your 1997 park impact fee is still what it was in 1997. And not everything went up between now and then, but almost everything did, including the price of land for parks and the cost of swing sets. And so we're going to recommend that you do, like most of the other 80 cities with park impact fees, we're going to develop an index, an inflation adjustment. It won't be the Consumer Price Index, because that has nothing to do with park land and improvements, but we'll have an index that you will allow, it will allow you for years in which you don't do an update, to at least keep up with inflation. Number 14 is, oh yeah, and what about updates? It's only been 18, 19 years, you know? It's between friends, right? Why do we, why would we worry about that? You have adopted a really neat new parks master plan, your ProSAP plan, and you periodically update your comprehensive plan, which links back to that park rec, open space element, and you do your capital facilities plans regularly. You should be updating your park impact fees, not every year, probably not every two or even three, but certainly every time you do a complete overhaul of a plan, it should trigger an update of, of your park impact fee. And if you go five or more years without updating the major plans, then we think maybe a provision that like every four years, maybe every two capital facilities plan cycles, you would do an update of this. So you wouldn't have to drag us back and spend consultant dollars every year, every two or every three, but you don't want it to go 19 years again, okay? Because it really gets out of sync with what you are all about and what you're trying to do with your park plans. nearing the end here, you have in your current code, in chapter 24, a separately stated mitigation requirement, not just for parks, but for impacts on all kinds of things. And we just want to work with you and with your staff and with the city attorney to make sure that anything we do doesn't create a double-dipping with that, and also make sure that what you're asking for there is still meritorious if the park impact fee is really capturing all of those mitigation requirements. So we'll be thinking about that, bringing you some thoughts on it. And our exit line is you do still have an annexation area. We're aware of it, and we will make sure that whatever we do doesn't interfere with that process. We mentioned in our memo that an excellent interim strategy in the event that you are successful in, in getting that annexation area is to do what Kirkland did. And that is, on the advice of their attorney, at the moment that that land became part of the city of Kirkland, it became subject to all of Kirkland's rules, which would include the then-existing park impact fee. So if somebody walked in the day after annexation and pulled a building permit, they weren't going to get off without a park impact fee. They would simply pay the one that was on the books at that time. But it's arguable that while the annexation area somehow changes the planning effort and the fees and stuff, and again, with the city attorney's advice, yeah, but that doesn't mean we can't charge the fee. It just means we need an orderly plan within a year or two to update our park impact fee and, and update how that annexed area is affected by all of this. But nobody goes home without paying just because they're lucky enough to have been in the annexed area. So that's our recommendation. Last slide, Mayor, is our schedule. Right in the middle of that bar chart, on March 15th, there's a vertical line going through the city council meeting, March the 15th at 10:00 PM. Oh, it didn't say that, 10:00 PM. And what you can see happening from here is we will go away, and the architect side of our team will hand this over to the electricians and the plumbers and the carpenters, where we'll actually start calculating the fees, doing the homework. And that's task three in the middle of the chart. That'll go through April. And then in May, we'll document everything, write reports, so that all these spreadsheets and technical documents are actually understandable by citizens and by the park board and the council. We will then put it under the staff's microscope in task five, end of May, beginning of June. And then we are planning a series of meetings in June, starting with a park board meeting in early June. This, by the way, as with many other cities, is an information item to park board rather than a recommendation item from them to you, because this is essentially a monetary issue. It's about revenues and fees and charges. But because the money goes to something they care about, because they put a lot of effort into that plan, we think that it's good for them to know what we're going, what we're up to. And you certainly want them to be informed consumers, even though we're not asking them to make a specific recommendation to you. And you could, but most cities have said it isn't necessary, certainly from a legal viewpoint, but having an informed park board is a good thing. And we did that last week and had a really great time, and they were very pleased to have learned all about this. We see coming back to you for a work session, like this is a work session, not an action item, but a full briefing, tentatively scheduled for your June 14th meeting. And then after you have seen our work officially, we would then take it to the community at large with an emphasis on the development community. Not because they're entitled to special treatment compared to other citizens, but because they are the stakeholders who have to pay this fee. And it's only fair that they know what's in it, and any builder, developer, home builders' association, property owner who wants to come, it'll be an open meeting, it's not private, but they have a chance to turn all the pages, ask us all the hard questions, so that they know what, what they're getting into. This won't turn them all into wonderful advocates demanding that you do this, but it will make them informed consumers, so that if they come and raise questions or even objections, they're basing it on a really good understanding of what we did, and they're not left out in the cold. And it's been a very effective strategy we've used in other cities. Then we will come back to you for your action at a hearing, at which certainly those stakeholders will undoubtedly speak up. Other stakeholders, park users, taxpayers in general, may speak up. Right now, we've scheduled it on a fast track right away, like just only a week after your work session. We could put that into early July or something. We're trying to get this done by this summer to meet our contractual obligations and a schedule the staff has laid out. Deep breath. Okay. I hope I didn't talk so fast it was un-understandable. I'd be happy to take any questions if I haven't worn you out.
Mr. Young, thank you for coming in and staying late with us. We have exactly five minutes for council questions, so does anybody have any questions of the council?
I appreciate the presentation that you're giving, and you, you do have a voice that draws you into the presentation. So thank you so much for educating us tonight. It was very insightful.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're in good hands with your team.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Nope? Thank you very much for coming in and staying late. So let's see, city manager reports?
None this evening, Mayor.
Awesome. I'm not even going to ask for good order.